Good evening, everybody. Today is September 20, 2022. This time is 6:10 p.m. I'd like to call this meeting to order. As usual, we'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we'll open up tonight's meeting with public comment. Anyone who would like to make a comment, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. And Charles, if it doesn't look like anyone is here, we can see if anyone is on Zoom, and if not, we'll continue on with the meeting. Okay.
Nope.
Very good. So we'll move on to board presentations tonight. We've had a number of them, but I will kick this off with the first board presentation and working with VHB Engineering regarding some traffic updates. So the first thing that I'll say is that it is very clear that traffic is one of the most, if not the most important issues in the village. So as such, we are working with VHB Engineers, and more recommendations will be available at a later date, but for right now, we want to focus on getting traffic moving throughout the village and getting cars, a high volume of cars, off of our side streets, which is completely unfair to our residents on both north and south of Hill Street. So there's a number of things, and we'll let Ryan from VHB Engineers back this up, but there's a number of things that we're going to do to address these problems, and you'll see in our agenda tonight, we have a number of resolutions regarding a pilot program, as well as a number of public hearings that we're going to notice out to amend our local code in order to address these important traffic concerns. So the first pilot program that we'd like to roll out, I believe, will begin on October 1st, and also wanted to thank our South Hampton Village Police Department, as well as Charlie McArdle and Jay Schnyrmann over the town for their help on this. But the first thing we're going to roll out, and this comes after speaking to some of our residents, is that we're going to do a pilot program where we, between 3:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m., prohibit through traffic to coming into the village off of Canterbury Road 39. So on McGee Street, where a lot of cars cut through, we're going to basically prohibit through traffic. Again, this is just a pilot program. There's other things that we can do. We want to see how this rolls out. The second thing that we're going to do is that we're going to add a three-way stop sign on McGee Street. This is again a recommendation from some residents in the neighborhood to help curb the flow of traffic there. The next step we're going to do is we are going to be eliminating left turns from 3 to 7:00 p.m. on weekdays on Lee Avenue and on Captain's Neck Lane. And we're also going to be eliminating right turns on Somerset Avenue from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. on weekdays. The reason for this, and again, this will be backed up by our traffic study here, is that what we are seeing is that there is a one-for-one switch. So as cars come out of Lee, Captain's Neck, Somerset, and other streets, they are essentially backing up Hill Street further, and then also forcing cars onto the side streets. But by eliminating these left and right turns, we're going to be removing some of these cars, hopefully, from the side streets, and also continuing traffic on Hill Street. This goes hand in hand with the flashing yellow light that we're now doing and operated by our traffic control officers on Hill Street, because that light stays red for too long, so now the traffic can flow out of the village. The other thing that's important, which we'll be doing tonight, is noticing a public hearing, not only to increase on the western portion of Hill Street, the speed limit to 30 miles per hour, but to globally, thanks to a New York State law that was just passed, and thanks to our state assembly person, Fred Deal, for his help, other than a few select streets that are the main arteries of the village, we'll be globally reducing the speed limits on, throughout our village, side streets to 25 miles per hour. We were able to reduce them on a few select streets, and the residents on those streets were extremely happy. So by slowing down traffic on side streets, increasing traffic on the main arteries, and then reducing or eliminating during certain hours, left and right-hand turns, and eliminating through traffic off of Canterbury Road 39, we believe that this is a good pilot program and a good way to start in order to help mitigate the traffic that we're experiencing in South Hampton Village. The other thing is we're also working hand in hand with South Hampton Town, who will also be rolling out their own pilot program on Canterbury Road 39, because the fact remains that too many cars on Canterbury Road 39, regardless of what we do here in the village, that is still the main problem, and Canterbury Road 39 has to be fixed. As many of you know, I also went in front of the Suffolk County Legislature, and I requested funding for a Canterbury Road 39 traffic study from Canoe Place Inn to Watermill, and Town Supervisor Jay Schnyrmann has told me he's been in touch with the county executive, and that he's willing to help fund either, fund some help in order to get this done, especially as we get closer to next summer. So I'll turn this over. We have some maps of some of these surrounding areas, but I'll turn this over to Ryan Winter from VHB Engineers. Our Acting Chief, Suher Tao, cannot be here today, but she's been participating in all these meetings as well. And we think this is a good start. And again, so tonight, you'll see a number of resolutions that will pass, as well as public hearings that we're going to notice out, that will both amend our code and adopt this pilot program. And also wanted to thank our Board of Trustees for their help in this process and for their support in trying out this pilot program. So Ryan, are you available?
Bring him on.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Warren. This is Ryan Winter with VHB Engineering. I don't know if you can see me or not.
We can see you. A little small, but we can see you.
Okay. So I am a licensed professional engineer with VHB Engineering. We've been working with the village over the past few months, looking at the various traffic issues that have amplified over the last year or so with the increase in traffic, and looking at ways to reduce both speeding through some of the side street and some of the cut-through traffic. So as the mayor alluded to, there's a larger study with a list of recommendations that will be forthcoming at a later date. The focus right now is to look at the western area of Hill Street, where there tends to be a lot of traffic buildup as you exit the village heading west in the afternoon rush hour. Part of that is due to the traffic signal at St. Andrews Road, that the mayor mentioned that has gone blinking yellow, that has improved traffic flow some. But we're looking to do more to make sure that we can do everything we can to reduce and eliminate cut-through traffic through some of these side streets that are seeing a large increase in traffic. So one of the things that was mentioned and that we looked at was eliminating turns from Somerset Avenue to westbound Hill Street. So if you come down Somerset to Hill, you cannot make a right during the peak. And it's similar on Lee Avenue and Captain's Neck Lane. If you're coming north to Hill Street, you cannot make a left during westbound peak. And the intent of this is to improve the flow of traffic on Hill Street and allow an increased amount of vehicles to get through that area and limit the amount of vehicles that are going to be turning in there. You know, people that are on driveways and such will still be able to turn, obviously, but the majority of the traffic is coming from those side streets currently. And by pushing that traffic further to the east, where it would have to join Hill Street at an earlier point, we're allowing the traffic to flow out of the village more freely and hopefully reduce some of the cut-through traffic even throughout some of these other streets that aren't having the turn restrictions, because enabling traffic to flow better on Hill Street.
All right, thank you, Ryan. I wanted to take any questions from the board or comments from the board on this.
No, I would just like to add that I thought it was quite interesting, you know, when you look at the traffic leaving the village, exiting the village, that once it does get past Tuckahoe Road, it does have an increase in the speed limit to 35, and the traffic does start to move as you leave the village, you know, adjacent to the reservation there. And so I do think it would be beneficial if we did increase the speed limit at least to 30 on Hill Street, to again, keep that traffic moving and, you know, going west out of the village, you know, at rush hour in the afternoon. So I think most people have observed that it does seem to open up once you get past Tuckahoe, and the speed limit does increase there to 35. And so I think it will help if we increase the speed to 30 on Hill Street in the village.
Thank you very much. Trustee Manger, any other comments or questions from the board?
Question for you, Ryan. Where do you expect the traffic that currently is using Somerset, Captain's Neck, Lee Avenue to go?
Well, the traffic is not generating...
Aren't they just going to go to Halsey Neck? Aren't they going to go to Halsey Neck? Aren't they going to go to Bishop's? Aren't they just going to come back farther? And if they don't, aren't they just going to clog up the village of Southampton, trying to get onto Hill Street? Where are they going to go? It's not like they're going to eliminate the cars. You're just going to eliminate some of the ways that they can go.
Correct, but you're also going to improve the through volume on Hill Street by eliminating those conflict points heading west. So the traffic on Hill Street will be allowed to flow better. So your volume on Hill Street will go up. And you're correct, the cars will use streets further east, but if the traffic is flowing on Hill better, the intent with the increase in speed is to encourage and improve the speed on Hill Street so that drivers, whether just by their own intuition or five ways, aren't being directed to these side streets. The traffic will be moving on Hill Street such that it will enable vehicles to get through faster by using that direct route.
Do you anticipate having a...
We're not saying that this is the silver bullet that's going to solve all the problems. We're looking at the worst locations first and how to address these. And these potential pilot solutions that we're looking at are not uncommon to other areas of Long Island where they have similar problems and they have been successfully successful.
Do you anticipate having a police officer at every one of these intersections to enforce the rules?
Well, there would be, and I would assume there would be some sort of enforcement plan initially to make sure people are following the rules. And then periodically enforcement. I don't know that the anticipation would be to have a police officer, the mayor can speak about it better than I can, but, you know, there would be periodic enforcement, presumably, as with any traffic restriction. I mean, if you don't provide enforcement, then it's hard to help stop people from doing things. And when you have these signs up and these restrictions, you're not necessarily, if there is no police presence, you're not going to stop everybody, right? There's still going to be people that are going to ignore that, but the vast majority of drivers will acknowledge and adhere to traffic rules and regulations as they're posted.
Anticipate having signage going fairly far back into the village so that people don't end up at Captain's Neck and Hill and all of a sudden have to make a U-turn on Captain's Neck because they don't want to make an illegal turn? How do you propose to handle that?
We have talked about, again, a period where it's just kind of giving out warnings and advising drivers of the change, so that when we do start enforcement, there will be a bit of anticipation that this is coming. And there will be new traffic pattern signs that can be posted on Ox pasture, on Bishop's to alert drivers that there's a change in the allowable driving direction at some of these streets, and that they will need to find another route.
And we're also going to utilize the illuminated signs that we have, the mobile signs.
One last question for you. What's the point of doing it now? There is, the problem doesn't exist now. It only exists in the summer. I mean, now you can go out to Hill Street. I just drove tonight. No problem at all. Why are we doing it now?
So we were out there, as I mentioned, we've been doing a larger scale study of traffic issues within the village for the last few months. But we did specific for this location, go out there the week of Labor Day, that Thursday, just to observe, you know, general conditions on Somerset. And there was still traffic backed up on Hill, obviously not to the extent pre-Labor Day, but it was backed up, and there was still cut-through traffic on Somerset. So it is, although not as severe, it is still occurring. And this is almost a better time to do a little bit of trial runs on things, because you don't have, you're not going to result in severe reactions to some of these changes as you would if it was full-fledged summer activity. So the shoulder periods are actually a good time to try some of these new techniques and regulations out.
Thank you.
I think part of this also is just to discourage people from going through the village. If they see they can't get out a certain way, or they have to go through a longer route, it's going to discourage people from going through the village, because I don't really think that we're going to, we could try certain things to help, but we have to keep the traffic on the highway on Canterbury Road 39. And this is why the mayor has been meeting with Suffolk County officials and all to try and get the people to stay on the highway, so they don't, the highway doesn't move, so that they're cutting through the village. This isn't even traffic, that's not even our traffic here. It's just traffic that's coming through the highway and it's passing through the village. So I think these are just little ways to, just to, I think people will be discouraged when they feel that they can't, they can't make a right-hand turn, they have to take a different route, it's going to be longer to maneuver and get through the village. I don't really think that's going to be, going to solve the problem that we have. The problem is the highway. We need to keep the people up on the highway.
The other thing that I'll add is, you know, to trustee Stevens and address your point, you're right, there could be, you know, people using Halsey Neck or Bishop's, which is, that's, which is why that will be Phase Two. We'll see how this pilot program goes. Halsey Neck, for example, South of Highway is the natural next step. Bishop, again, natural next step in, on the other direction. And so we'll see how this goes, and that's why, as Ryan pointed out, October may be a good time to roll this out and to try it. But we most certainly need to try something, because the problem is not getting any better, and next summer, when things start, it's going to be even worse. So the goal here is to try to fix some of the problems. We're going to also address, you know, driver behavior and patterns, which is important, the way people travel. I mean, people obviously use Moses, Somerset, Ox pasture to cut through the village, and we want to try to change the driver behavior. The other thing is that our Acting Chief Lieutenant Hurtow has been involved in this process and has followed us and participated hand in hand, and we will have officers enforcing, they will be helping spread the word. You'll see, or there should be resolution, if not here, as a walk-on, to appoint Joe Riccardi, he's a part-time police officer as well. We have ample traffic control officers during the summer. We had upwards of five part-time officers. We have our 30-plus officer staff, so we'll also be deploying our crew unit, who's done a great job, and the community response unit will also be helping work on traffic. But traffic right now is the top priority, and we need to do everything we can to address it. The last thing I will say is that VHB has looked at other streets as well. Those will be coming next. You know, he's looked at streets like Powell and Meeting House and other streets, and we're going to be exploring traffic calming and traffic reducing measures on those streets as well. But we'll start with the main issue here, which is Hill Street. So I hope to the village residents, this shows you that we are trying what we can do here. We hope that this will be successful and believe that we'll see some good results. But starting in October, when we roll this out, I think this will be a good first start. And again, thanks again, Ryan, to you at VHB Engineers. Thanks to the Village Police Department, Corey Sweeney of the Highway Department, and to the board and everyone who helped with this. So I guess I'm ready to move on now to the treasurer's report, unless there's any other comments from the board.
No.
All right. So I'll turn...
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, everybody.
So I will turn this over to Charlene for the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mayor. We have unaudited results for our last fiscal year-end, May 31, 2022. The audit went very smoothly. The auditors were here for two or three days. They did their field work. We have a few items that are, you know, communicating with them electronically, but we expect that we will be at record pace this year and probably have our financial statements. I actually spoke to them today. We might have drafts by October and have the financial statements issued by the November deadline, which is what I had tried last year. I think we got them in April of the following year. So we're trying to get on the ball with getting more timely issued audited financials. So we ended up the year very well. We had revenues budgeted at 32.2 million. We took in about 35.6. We budgeted expenditures at 32 originally, and then we revised. The revised expenditures came, if the board remembers, from many of those payouts that we had for retirements during the year. We had to do several, you know, I think it was total over a million dollars for those budget amendments, using up most of our employee reserves. So we had a revised budget of 34.4 million, and we actually expensed 33.1. So the projected within-year operating surplus is just under $2.5 million. So we're waiting on the audit results before we make any final determination, but then at that point in time, the board has several options. They could dedicate some of that towards reserves, the tax stabilization reserve. One of the, one of the comment, one of the discussions we had during the budget process, and the mayor had stated he was concerned about the retirement. We did budget a bit more for the second half of the year for the retirement in the budget, and the retirement rates did increase slightly, not as much as we thought they were, but we did get the projected rates for next year, and they did increase a bit. More concerned about the nicship rates, which will be coming out in December. I'm hearing rumors that we might see another double-digit increase in the premiums for health insurance. So we might consider taking some of this money and allocating it to the employee, you know, the tax stabilization or the employee benefit reserve to help offset the cost of some of those spikes in the rates that we might expect this year. Revenues, so driving that $2.4 million was the revenues. Our revenues came in strong. Building permits, we bought 2.4 million, exceeded our 1.3 budget by just over a million dollars. And mortgage tax, $2.3 million, exceeded our $850,000 budget by 1.47. We have first quarter results as well. So far, $33 million in our budget, 33.1. We've received 28, just over 28 million, but of course, we collect all of our property taxes in the first month of the year. And our expenditures are, we budgeted 33.1. We've expensed just under 7 million, so we're at the 20% mark, which is slightly less than a quarter. However, we do have some big-ticket items that come up and lump some during the year. Regarding audit status, as I just said, we have the RFP for IT services that was listed on the New York State Contract Reporter. We're starting, got a lot of interest in that, and we've been receiving lots of questions and responses. It actually looks like we're probably going to have quite a bit of submissions, and that is closing out the end of this month. Then there will be, I had brought up this discussion at Budget and Finance Committee, and a couple of members of the Budget and Finance Committee offered to help review and prepare a report for the board of the submissions, so the board would have time to review them and submit a report. And that's all I have, unless the board has questions. Our next, the last person on the agenda is Matt Weeks, who wanted to talk about the year-end report for Cooper's Beach.
I have more to go. I can bring it in. All right, before you go, I have a few comments. I think that's a very solid report from our last fiscal year. We nearly have $2.5 million of year-end operating surplus, and that comes off of a budget where we actually reduced taxes, both the levy and the rate, for the first time, rate for 20 years, levy first time ever. There are, however, some concerns, which I've been saying now for quite some time. As Charlene alluded to, you know, she's heard rumors of nicship rates having a double-digit increase. I've been saying that for quite some time, that our board needs to be prepared for that. I actually was speaking to head of one of our units, and he mentioned that he's hearing upwards of $40,000 a year for a family plan for nicship health insurance. That currently, the way the village has its contract set up, we made some changes with supervisors, but the village is going to have to shoulder all of that, and it's going to obviously give us a challenge in our upcoming budget, so we should be prepared for that. The other thing that we should be prepared for in our budget, which is going to start, the process is going to start in February, is we're not going to have $2.4 million of the building department revenue again, especially with the slowdown we're seeing in the real estate market, and we're most certainly not going to have 2.325 million of mortgage tax. So these are all things that we're going to need to consider. I made that loud and clear in our last budget cycle, and I want to make sure the board is clear today when I bring those things up. But I do think this was a good year. The other thing that is not included in this treasurer's report is that, or actually, is that we did actually expend a significant amount of money in post-retirement benefits for some high-up department leaders and managers, and those will have to be replenished in some form or another. So we'll be in decent financial shape, but this board is going to have to make some tough, finally make some tough decisions in our next budget cycle, given where I predict building department revenue, mortgage tax rates, and rising health insurance premiums to be headed. So that's just some room for thought. And then as far as the RFP process and IT services, I think that's a very good idea, as we'll see from our warrants this afternoon. Our fluid inventory bills are quite high, and we've got to get those down and controlling a little bit more. And then furthermore, I'd like to basically run point on this process with the RFP for the IT services. I think it's important that myself and the Board of Trustees evaluate these service providers, because we are the elected officials, and I think it's important to get eyes, our eyes on this first. So that being said, I'll turn this over to Matt Weeks. Matt, how you doing?
Good. Good evening. How are you?
Good. Good to see you.
Good having you, Matt.
Good. Thank you so much for having me, Mayor Warren, Board of Trustees. Thank you so much. Before we get into this season overview, I just have a couple of people I want to thank for an amazing season. First, I would like to thank our liaisons, the beach, Robyn Brown. Thank you so much for all of your support. I want to thank Charlene Kegelbats. Thank you for always having your door open and for us having some great conversations throughout the season. And last but not least, Kathy Sweeney. You've been absolutely amazing, so I really appreciate it. It really does take a dodge. I love having the support of our Highway Department, Billy Maintenance, Steve Phillips, Daniel Faustette, our village PD. We've been, we've been collaborating, and it's been exceptional. So I really appreciate all of those that are in the background working hard for Cooper's. Is it possible for me to share my screen?
Yes.
Yes, it is, Matt.
Yep, go ahead.
All right. So up on the screen right now, you should be able to see the slideshow. Is that up right now?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, it is.
All right. So a couple of highlights. So we have 82 days of Cooper's. Right now, we have 32 employees staffing, which includes lifeguards, beach crew, booth attendants. Of those 32 employees, 18 are lifeguards. I want to emphasize that, because I know there have been a couple municipalities that have had difficulty guarding their stations this year. Of those 18 lifeguards, three of which are EMTs through our very own village. I do have a true and false for Mayor Warren. Mayor Warren, true and false, our lifeguards have a combined 150 seasons of experience.
That's a good question.
I would say true.
I would say true, but it might be more than that.
So that was a loaded question. It's false, but not by much. 147...
All right, that was a trick question there.
It's just under 147 seasons of experience. I think that's amazing. Our head lifeguard has 35 years' experience. We have a lifeguard underneath, Mike Purcell, that has 32 years' experience, and so on. So our lifeguards are attentive. They know the water well, and they always have preventative measures. So I'm very grateful for them and their abilities. We had unbelievable weather this season. Every day was a beach day. We had over 40 injury-preventing rescues that we documented this year. We also had something very new this year. We had two confirmed shark sightings that were in the swimming area. That was the first time ever, in my experience, being there for five years, but we are working alongside Southampton Town and thinking about how to increase communications in surrounding areas. A big shout-out to our lifeguards again for supporting our junior lifeguard program. It went great this year. I think we had, we had more young swimmers in the water this year than we did last, and that's all we can ask for, you know, getting children to know, you know, what the water is like and how to maneuver through it in difficult situations. That's part of our job, and so our lifeguard loves supporting that program. We've maintained our extended hours. We're one of the only municipal beaches that are open from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on weekdays, most start at 10:00, and then on weekends, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So we're very proud of that, to being able to maintain it. Thank you to the board. We received a new rescue vehicle, and so it's up and running, it's on the beach, and hopefully won't have to use it too often, but when we do, we can pretty much be prepared for any situation. So we greatly appreciate that. Our communication, our work alongside our Southampton Village PD this year was a little more extensive. With the shark sightings, we are trying to find better ways to communicate. We have a lot of neighboring village beaches around, so that's kind of something that we want to continue to address going forward, is how can we better communicate. When we do see shark sightings, whether they're confirmed or unconfirmed, Charlene and I had a kind of a sit-down via Zoom with Southampton Town, and we spoke about that. And so there's ideas kind of flowing in that category. We also had other events happen at Cooper's Beach that we also worked alongside Southampton Village PD, and that becomes important, because there's a couple of needs that we will be asking for, so that we can maintain that great collaboration with our police department. I believe, and Charlene could maybe vouch for this, but recorded more daily pass sales this year than in previous years, so much so that we almost ran out of footlights. We almost near 10,000 passes. Charlene, does that sound about right?
I believe it does. Yeah, we ran out of dailies.
Yeah. We were coming down to a couple of needs where, yeah, we put in a certain number of orders for the daily passes, but I want to say, saying that, our parking lot was organized, it was safe. We always give priority to our village residents, for those who also purchase our monthly and our season passes. So this year went extremely well. We tried a couple of different tactics, and I think those worked themselves out well pretty smoothly. Sold out of chairs and umbrellas on a majority of our weekends, which is something that also gets you in terms of our needs. And we supported one Chamber of Commerce concert. The other one was rained out, but we also staff a lot of people that don't know that, but when the Chamber of Commerce does a concert at Cooper's Beach, we staff it to make sure that we can clean up and have the beach prepared for the following day. So along with those great highlights, we do have a couple of upgrades or needs. I was very excited that I not only got introduced to Trustee Menger, but we had a chance to speak during the sandcastle, and we kind of did a walk-through, and a lot of these areas, we found that would be great enhancements. So, you know, working alongside PD with shark sightings, dangerous conditions, we are using an older model of walking, so we are asking that the board consider that would get to up-to-date. I believe they're called 800 police radios. I know we already took a look at the cost of them, and I believe Charlene and Kathy have those numbers. With chairs and umbrellas, so we did put in order last year for chairs, they were on backstock, but, you know, our goal is, it should be hard to sell out of umbrellas and chairs, so we should be teetering on that 150 number for umbrellas and 150 chairs. With our staffing, we should be able to just reach that number, but this year, we sold that quite often, because we were far below 150, for example. I believe we only had 105 chairs this year due to the backstock issue, and I believe umbrellas, we were about 140, so we sold out of umbrellas much less than the chairs. I do consider us one of the cleanest beaches, if not the cleanest beaches on Long Island, maybe in the East Coast. We are ranked number three in the nation, so I wouldn't be surprised if people come to Cooper's, they're in awe of how beautiful it is and how clean. There is one area that our garbage cans, a couple of years back, we did order, I want to say maybe like five, four years ago, we ordered garbage cans. They weren't suitable for Cooper's, they were made of metal, they deteriorate quickly, so that's something else that we're looking to upgrade. You know, our staff does a wonderful job of cleaning up Cooper's. We know how many people come and visit Cooper's, whether it's between 9:00 to 5:00 or afterwards. A lot of people come for dinner at Cooper's or bring their own dinner, but, you know, there's no one there to really clean it up until the morning, and that's what they're for. So our early shift does all that hard work. We definitely, some new garbage cans that made the aesthetics of Cooper's would definitely be an asset. We do have a compound area in the, I believe it's the southwest corner of Cooper's. Right now, it's used for what it's needed for, however, there's a shed in the back that is quickly deteriorating. We did ask that we get a caisson for that, but while we get the caisson, we've also tried to rethink the compound area. On the next slide, you'll see that it was just something that I mocked up quickly, but something that I thought was low-cost, would also make sense for the departments that are using Cooper's. For safety, speed bumps at the entrance is something that we'd like to consider. We do have a number of people, you know, when you have that pass, that pass comes with great power. Sometimes that means that you can quickly go through without having to stop, but we do want people to be mindful that. We do have staff that works the booth area, they are on the pavement, and so we do ask cars to slow down, and one way to do that might be a speed bump or two in the entrance area. Our dunes are very important to us. They're important to our residents that live nearby, they're important to traffic and so on. We need our dunes, and that information signage would be important. Right now, we don't have any, so we do see a lot of people that visit Cooper's, maybe aren't sure what dunes are used for. Instagram and other social media is becoming very popular, and so people love to go up on the dunes. So myself, along with a number of residents that come to Cooper's daily, we thought any informational sign, telling what dunes are used for might be helpful. Along with tick signage, we know ticks are an issue in the area, and we do have a lot of deer in those dunes, so that might be something that we find important as well. Through our walkthrough, Trustee Menger and I had a wonderful conversation about welcome signage. When you walk up the ramp to the beach, there's a vacant, pretty large area on the side of our cafe that would be a great place for a welcome sign. I know Main Beach has a wonderful sign that is inviting, and in fact, it does make a lot of photos, so we thought that would be a wonderful place. Trustee Menger actually told me that years ago, there used to be signage on the side of the building.
Yeah, I remember that.
That was pretty neat as well, so maybe there's something we can bring back. Last but not least, there's a, I would like the board to consider a permanent beach sign with daily conditions. Right now, we have a Matt Weeks made sign from a whiteboard.
I kind of like that.
It's lost the trick, it looks good, but I think we could do better, so I have some suggestions for that. On the next slide, kind of didn't come out the way I wanted it, but you'll see, this is a depiction of our compound. With the option, you'll see in the far right, our beach rake area for our highway department to store the beach rakes. So the left of that, you'll see four compartments starting at the top. That would be our Cooper's Beach caisson trailer. During the season, it would house our very new rescue vehicle. In the off-season, it would house our umbrellas and chairs. There's a lot of things that get into our shed, there's a lot of mice, and they eat away at a lot of our assets, and a caisson trailer, which is airtight, would help prevent that, so we don't each year have to just continue putting in for new umbrellas and chairs. Our staff does a great job of maintaining it, and the caisson trailer would help that. Below that would be another gated area for our mules. So those are the two 4x4s that help us service the beach. Below that, possibly, you know, our ocean rescue area, they right now have a shed that stores their rescue vehicles. So I don't know, you know, below the ocean rescue area, there's also an idea where they can put their shed or a new caisson, whatever they feel would fit their needs. But mainly, you know, we want to share the space, but we can't share the space if it doesn't make sense. We need to make sure that we can, you know, in the summer, when things are, when the season's at its height, that we can, that we can utilize our space efficiently. And so, you know, this was just something that I proposed, but, you know, I definitely don't know if it's perfect, but having another set of us take a look at it and see if it fills all the needs would be helpful. So I think that is, sorry. Did I just stop sharing?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, perfect. So I can send that to you, that PowerPoint, I just kind of made it quickly, but it goes along with the notes that Charlene and I, at the end of the season, kind of went over and felt that could be some possible upgrades. But, you know, is any questions on what you saw?
Now, Matt, didn't you also say that you wanted to increase some of the rental fees for umbrellas and chairs? If we're going to buy additional ones, obviously, that would help offset the cost.
Yeah, so thank you for bringing that up. So right now, our umbrellas are $10, our chairs are 15, sorry, other way around. Our chairs are $15, our umbrellas are 10. You know, we have great wear and tear on our chairs and our umbrellas, because people come at 10:00 in the morning, and they use those chairs and umbrellas till 4:00 or 5:00 so it's getting a lot of wear and tear, the water, the salt. So one thing that I was possibly suggesting is to take a look at an increase, making the chairs $15 and the umbrellas $20. We sold an overwhelming, or I should say, we rented an overwhelming amount this year, so perhaps we won't get as many rentals, but the revenue may increase.
Just as a point of reference, we exceeded the revenue budget at Cooper's in total for all revenue streams by $196,000 this year.
That's great.
And beach chairs and umbrellas doubled with the budget. So the budget, we budgeted $40,000, we brought in $86,000.
That's been the umbrella and chairs, that's been the same rate for, ever since I could remember.
Yeah.
10 and 15.
Trustee Russell, yeah, I've been there for five years, that's been the same rate, as far as I know as well.
Yeah, my son worked on the beach, and that was a very long time ago, maybe 12, 14 years ago, and I think that was the rate then.
Well, I would argue it's nice to be able to go out on the beach and have a reasonable price for a chair and umbrella. Enjoy yourself at the concession stand, and it's already, you know, $50 to use the beach, so we don't have to get every last dollar from every visitor and resident. We're already raising building department fees and helicopter fees, which is, those are things we should add, but when it comes to beach chairs and umbrellas, maybe there's something for the everyday, everyday people that we don't have to do, but for a discussion later. The other thing I'll add, Matt, is two quick points, or three points. First, you guys did a great job, so thank you very much. We are second to none, especially with your leadership, so thank you. I did speak to our chief of police, and I believe, I spoke to Kathy as well, about looking into some drones. Sharks will be back next year, so it'd be nice to basically train a few of our lifeguards on the use of drones. It'd be very helpful. I know a lot of other municipalities use them, and I think it'd be helpful to be able to deploy one or two, so that we can protect our residents further. And I also, and I also just wanted to thank Ben, who did an outstanding job at the concession stand. He weathered the pandemic, he provided great food and beverage service, reasonable prices, and also helped keep the bathrooms and concession area perfectly clean. So I also just wanted to thank Ben for his great job this past year. So that's all from me, but I don't know if anyone else has any other comments.
Mr. Mayor, Ken Gray here, can I chime in for a second?
Sure.
On the issue with the drones, that's a great idea. I have other municipalities that use them. You need to be certified with the FAA.
Yes.
Not a hard process, but whoever's going to be the drone operator needs to file with the FAA and get a certification. And over this past summer, when the FAA heard, and it was national news about the shark sightings off of Long Island, they approved them instantaneously. So it's not a hard process, but it's something that needs to be done.
Absolutely, and that's the program that we're looking into. I spoke to the state police, and they said it was actually, like you said, a pretty seamless process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? If, Trustee Brown, I don't know if you have anything to say, if not, we'll keep on moving.
I'm just in total agreement with the drones. I'm quite happy about that. I did some research on it, and I shared it in a chat with the, all the trustees. We are very aware, thank you, Mr. Gray, of the training that's needed for it, but I think it's a great answer to, and technology has upgraded, as opposed to just using binoculars, so I'm so glad that we're all in agreement with that, and we look forward to purchasing that and getting our lifeguards trained.
All right, thank you, Trustee Brown, and great job as the beach liaison, so thank you for your hard work on Cooper's Beach and helping us with our clerk Kathy Sweeney, get us a new gator, which also helped with beach safety. So we'll keep on moving. The third board presentation tonight is the Cornell University Pavement Management Internship Program update, presented by Joseph Gates, intern of VOS. So for those who don't know what this is, is that this past year, we rolled out and worked with Cornell University on a pavement management program. We want to have the best streets that we possibly can, we want to make sure they're paved perfectly, and we did a tremendous amount of paving this past year, as many residents could see. And as part of this process, we worked and partnered with Cornell University on their pavement management program. So Joseph Gates can tell us a little more about the program, and what the update is, and kind of how this went.
Bringing him in now.
All right, thank you. By the way, you guys do a great job, very seamless tonight, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Joseph, how are you? Good evening.
Good evening, thank you guys. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, lovely. One second here. So my name is Joseph Gates, I'm from Syracuse, New York, and I go to University of Buffalo on a senior year, and I do civil engineering. I actually specialize in transportation, so I'm kind of right where I need to be here, listening to your traffic problems and everything. Yeah, so I'd like to thank the board and the DOT for hiring me and Cornell for connecting me with you guys, so this was a lovely program, and it was a great time, and it was a good place to spend the summer, so it was a good time all around. This is the report, I have the other 20 pages or so. I don't know if this was shared with you guys or not. I sent it to Gary, but I was informed Gary's no longer, no longer working with you guys anymore. But here, here's the appendix and whatnot. And just a brief overview of what this program is for and what it does. It's the pavement management program, as we said, and that covered a detailed survey of the road, so putting in the distresses that are on the roadway, and then the program will apply the appropriate budgeting and timeline for when those repairs should take place. So I won't read the entire thing, because I believe it was shared with you guys, but we come down here, this is one of the main, the main aspects of the program, is this, when a municipality defers treatment on their roads, they often worsen to the point where a complete reconstruction, full entire milling, and repaving the entire road is necessary. But if you can use overlays and crack repairs and sufficient pothole maintenance and patching, then you can extend the lifespan of each road and keep them in immaculate condition that you guys keep down there. And, yeah, one thing that's kind of special about Southampton too, and just Long Island in general, is it's all on sand for the most part, so it kind of makes the roadway actually last longer, because it makes a more even drainage pattern across the road. And the water is primarily what ends up damaging the roadway, whether it's cracking, running, or any other sort of damage. So, yeah, here, this is preserving the existing infrastructure that is deemed good or excellent, using lower-cost treatments, so crack repairs and patching, and overlays and things like that, as opposed to an entire mill and fill of the road, which is grinding the road down and repairing the entire roadway. So doing these repairs keeps out water infiltration, and when cars go over the small cracks, it puts greater pressure on those areas. puts greater pressure on those areas, and then it will worsen, 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 and create a full-out failure of the roadway, versus if this is fixed while it's still small and a manageable problem, then it extends the life of the road with a fraction of the cost. So my process kind of began with collecting, collecting the roadway data, so this involved going along each roadway and pulling up, can you see the screen here?
Yeah.
That I just opened up, okay. This window here is the actual program itself, and this here has all the roadway data, so this is the roadway numbers and roads, and this encompasses...
No, no, we're only, sorry, sorry for interrupting, we're only seeing your...
Oh, sorry about that, yeah, I can... Okay, should have it now, right?
Yes, now we do.
Yeah, okay. So here we are, and this here has all the roadway numbers, the names, the DOT numbers, where they are from, and to, and the length, and width, and the number of lanes, and the pavement type, and this was, this program here, this is just the inventory list, so the actual roadway survey of the roadway condition is the thing that I was doing, and it gives you a PCI number, which is pavement condition index, and then this is going to be your condition of the roadway. So if we look, most of your roads, 94, which is a perfect score, most of them were recently paved, or had zero to four million years of defects of any kind, and that's nearly all of them. But then, if we look...
So which roads do we have problems with, or issues with?
So, yeah, so getting to that is Pond Lane, for example, that was one road, obviously, I don't know if you guys have fixed that yet, I was down there, hadn't been yet, but that's the, in terms of PCI, that is the lowest scoring road that you guys have.
That's so funny.
Wall Street, actually, concrete, so that one didn't quite fit this program. But then, yeah, so Pond Lane, it recommends to fix that one first, and something like Meadowmere is high on priority, and Windmill Lane, surprisingly, takes priority as well, because it's coming into the town, so roads that are near the town center, or have higher traffic volumes are prioritized over residential streets. And then, if we look...
We're gonna have to take care of Herrick Road quickly.
Herrick Road's taken care of?
We're gonna have to, that's tough, that's number one.
That road here.
Herrick Road, yeah, that's...
76, I think I got, or something.
Full rehabilitation there. So it, the program actually puts out the type of repair that shouldn't be done, on the roads too, as well, so then, for a road like Herrick, it recommends a rehab, which is a full milling fill, and then it has the cost analysis over here, which, again, these costs are varying so much every day that they can be altered quite quickly, just, it's basically a simple area calculation with the price per square foot, so then that's just the admin settings, and you can switch it in there real quick, but, because I don't think $97,000 will quite cover some of those roads, or $40,000, I don't think it'll cover that.
I don't know what town.
But, that's a quick fix in altering costs. The important part is more so just the inventory list, and the accurate depiction of the roadways in the future, so consistency with determining the roadway distress, distresses. So if we were to go to a road like Pond Lane and do a new survey on it, this is the survey list that would come up, and if it has drainage issues, which are a little puffer in the spot, because it's not wet, it's a little harder to see, but there's, there's ways to do that, and that's edge cracking primarily, and then roughness of the road, kind of, if you're driving down the road, a cup of coffee, it's just a hole, that's only a handful of roads down there. Cracking, longitudinal, and transverse, these are cracks that are kind of standalone, there's no cracks surrounding them, depending on that, and then these low, medium highs, the extent is the coverage of the roadway, and severity is the, kind of, the width of the cracks, or, yeah, basically, the severity. Alligator extent, alligator cracks are the big, it looks like an alligator's back, they're quite, actually have the image, but I'll flip back over to that, but... So here's some transverse cracking, the extent, severity, alligator cracking, this kind of cracking, this will lead to potholes and full, full roadway failure pretty quickly. Edge cracking is the, along the edge of the road, this is far, far past edge cracking, and it's alligator cracking, and longitudinal cracking, that's, that's a mess right there, that needs a whole, whole big patch. Patching and potholes, so patching also can encompass potholes as well, if a patch is raised or creates a roadway issue, it can count as a pothole, and these are just potholes. Running is an issue, not as typical down here, because there's not as much heavy traffic, but if you have a lot of heavy traffic, buses, big, big dump trucks, or things like that, mostly construction for you guys, it can cause running of the roadway. Not particularly that much of a problem, it's minor, but then if it becomes deeper, then you collect water, which further damages the roadway, and also creates hydroclining situations. This is bleeding, pretty, not that big of an issue, it creates traction issues in the, in the winter, or if it's wet. This is asphalt that drips on the road after, or leaks up through the sediment. And then drainage here, this is kind of a typical drainage issue, if you see this crack running alongside here, it's where the pavement is laminating, and it looks like a couple layers of pavement have already come up here, and you can, this is the typical area where drainage issues become a thing, is along the edge, and that is a big problem to fix, because if, if you have water built up on your road, it will easily land pretty quickly. Roughness is just general, general roughness of the road. I think a lot of people think of damage kind of like this, but there's also reverberation, even on a freshly new paved road, there can be reverberations, or vibrating of the car at certain speeds, so trying to minimize that, but you guys are pretty set down there. Those are the types of damages, and then each one of those is assessed a severity and an extent, and then the program from there determines how much it would cost to fix, and what the right course of action is.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Joseph.
One more little bit here, so for, for your town in particular, the ones, the surveys that it was most recommending were primarily crack repairs, obviously deferring maintenance on most of your roads that were in perfect condition. Few roads, Pond Lane and Meadowmere, had drainage issues. And then it's also recommending overlays for some of your roads as well, because if a road isn't displaying too much, too much rutting, or elevation change, and big potholes or anything like that, as opposed to milling the road down, and grinding all that down, doing a thin overlay, which they do pretty inexpensively now compared to the full two inches of pavement, they do about quarter inch of pavement over the top, and that will just resurface your road, so if it's in good condition, doesn't have any water drainage issues, then overlays are a popular, popular option now. Patching, huge problem, those take care of the alligators, and they take care of the, any potholes that will arise. Rehabilitation, Pond Lane, Herrick, those are the key roads that need a surface treatment, simulator overlays, kind of, pretty much the exact same thing, it's resurfacing a road that's in good condition, and puts a smooth finish on it. And then PCI groupings here, these are the pavement condition index, you guys have about half the roads, you have 173 roads total that leave South Hampton Village, and about 106 of them are in near-perfect condition, and then there's a few stragglers down here at the end. And the five-year improvement plan, fortunately for you guys, it's only a three-year improvement plan, shows your roadway is in such good condition, and it was able to complete most of the projects and, and the planned rehabilitation in, in the only three years of the budget. So this is what it would look like, so this is miles of pavement covered versus the cost of rehabilitation. The roadway budget, approximately $750,000 for repair, I don't, let's see, I think it's, I think it's right around there. And then this is estimating around $500,000, but then, that is very subject to change, because the, the slight change in asphalt cost, and all that, and labor and whatnot, that adds, adds up pretty quickly, so that gets very well, quite close to the budget limit. And then this first here, it's covering a lot of miles, because it's mostly crack repairs and doing overlays, inexpensive repairs, kind of keeping the good roads good, and then putting off bigger, larger projects for later years. But, yeah, are there many questions? I'm, I'm kind of at the end here for the most part. I, yeah.
My only question would be, and if you could just sort of net it out, are we in a good position in terms of the amount of money that's being allocated versus the amount of money that's going to be needed? Are we ahead of the curve, or are we behind the curve there?
I think you're pretty appropriately allocated right now. I don't, I don't think the budget would need to increase, that's for sure, but there certainly is a slightly different climate all there, and keeping every road in near-perfect condition is kind of priority. So I, I think it's looking, it's looking pretty accurate right now, it's looking pretty close to where it needs to be. The budget's around $750,000, this is probably underestimating the entire cost, the $500,000, $600,000, so it looks like you guys are in pretty good shape in terms of roadway repairs, and I know you guys got a huge freedom here with National Fuel or National Grid running lines, so you had a couple roads taken care of for free, so that's always, that's always helpful. But, yeah, it looks like the budget is appropriate.
Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you, Joseph, that was a good report.
Well done.
Thank you very much.
A great job, thank you. Joseph, we'd love, you know, we'd love to continue working with you, we don't know what your future plans are, but you did an outstanding job, that was extremely thorough. We also obviously like to, it's, you know, we have been putting work into our roads over the last two or three years, so it's, it's a good validation of, of some of the work and investment we've made in some of the roads. To hear that many of them are in near-perfect condition, I think that's something that we pride ourselves on, but it's also outstanding to see that, that excellent database, really by, by category, and then we now know what needs to be done, and what roads need to be made priority, so it's an outstanding help, and we also would love, obviously, for our head of our highway department, who I believe, or another gentleman of our highway department have participated in the program as well, but would love to make sure that they're, you know, fully onboarded and up to speed, because this is a, this is exactly how we want to implement the use of, of technology and partnerships in order to improve our, our roads and general services to our village residents. But, again, thank you, this was outstanding, we really appreciate the help, and extraordinarily comprehensive overview, so thank you again.
Thank you very much, guys.
All right. I don't know if there's any other questions from the board, or comments, if not, we have our final board presentation, which is the Tyler Assessment Software request, and that is William McCoy. I'm not sure if William is on Zoom, or if, okay, excellent.
He's on Zoom.
Good evening.
Hold on, I think you're on mute.
All right, good to see you, Bill.
Okay, there we go. Good evening again. The time has come for us to change our assessment software. We've had the same software for 12 years, it's called PAS. PAS integrates very well with our tax program, called TAX. It's the same company, which is now Government Brands, so it's very easy to work with it, and it also works with Municity, which is our building software, but the building department's moving, moving to another product. So, beginning in 2018, there have been news of upgrades discontinuing PAS, and finally the company was sold. In 2018, when Danielle and I started hearing all this news, we started preparing for the inevitability that we'd have to change to another software company, which is a big move for us, not only for the expenditure of the village, but just the migration to a new software program. We've also started going to meetings with a lot of other villages in Nassau, Suffolk, and Westchester, who are in the same position as us. We've been overnight to Scarsdale, day meetings in another Green Bird up there, and also in Long Beach and Hempstead, so we've really looked into this a lot, as has a lot of villages that are in the same position. We've made some friends along the way, and I'll tell you a little bit how that will come in handy. The company was sold to Government Brands about a year and a half, two years ago. They immediately said they wanted to upgrade the assessment software. Well, they started doing that, and then last spring, they informed everybody that they were discontinuing the product. So that's what, what situation we're in right now, but they did say that they would continue to support the product through the end of next year, okay? So we're kind of on the clock now. There are very limited options for assessment software, it's quite different than building software, tax software, or treasury software, because it's very state-specific, as, as in New York State-specific. So a company could be big in Michigan, but have no business in New York, and they would not even be a candidate to us, because of state reporting, with exemptions, roles, and things like that, have to be done the way New York State wants them done. We've been researching, not only meeting with other assessors, but Danielle especially, has done a lot of work in researching companies, and they are very few that would be candidates for us, and they are Tyler, Paris Govern, which is really the gold standard for assessment, and we did have a vendor offer to give us deep, deep discounts if we could be their first one in New York, or might have been nationwide, and I politely declined. We don't want to get up to putting out the roll and be in a chaotic situation where we cannot put out a roll, or get out, get out our tax bills. So it really comes down to Tyler and Paris Govern. Govern was here in 2018 when we started to have these problems, and they quoted the village, this is for everything, all software in the village, just under $1 million. So Steve Funch at the time politely declined that, so we really only have one option, because they don't do standalone, and that is Tyler, who we've been talking to since the spring, since we got this news. They are, they quoted us a very high fee initially, there's a one-time fee to set it up and train, and then there's an annual fee to keep it going and to have service. We teamed up with the villages of, we asked the guy, what if we go in together with a few other villages, will you take us in as a group and give us discounts, because, you know, we're all in New York and everything? He said, yes, please try to get together. So we've teamed up with the village of Freeport, the city of... So we've teamed up with the village of Freeport, the city of Long Beach, and the village of Hempstead to get the cost down, and they dropped it well over half, just so they could do this economies of scale. And so the quote is now is $48,461 for the one-time setup fee, and that includes migration to their software. And then it's $17,500 annually on a five-year contract. And there will also be training expenses. We have to fly two Texans up to do probably three training sessions of Tuesday through Thursday. I was talking to Shalene about this today, and a few of our unmarried employees said, well, we'll put them up if we like them. That's kind of something, maybe we'll take a look on that. So anyway, the good news is we don't have anything budgeted for this year, but there will be no expense out this year, okay? And next year...
Bill, can I interrupt for one second? Bill, are we currently, what are we currently paying with the guys we've got? In other words, what's the difference between the new stuff and what we already have in terms of cost?
Okay, we're paying $7,700 annually now to government brands. That has not changed in probably four or five years, and it's because of all of this uncertainty. So we're getting a super deal from this old software company. So it's 77, going up to $17,500. You know, we're on my, so it would come to be next year about $75,000 as an expenditures to really get us up and running on this, and then year after that, $17,500 per year as we go, and it will be locked in for five years. This program integrates well with our tax program. We have had other villages, which we've talked to, who have done this, and they say that it was really a very easy move, because the assessment software is kind of their mothership. It gives information to the tax software to send out the bills. So the assessment program drives this, and if it does not integrate well with the tax program, we have a problem. So in this case, from all accounts, we've heard it's really a good match. One of the good things we like about the Tyler Assessment Software Program is a man named Mike Thrab. He was a developer of the PAS software, and now is working for Tyler. He's one of the managers in their assessment department. He knows us well. Danielle and I have met him and talked to him many, many times, but the key here is that he knows the software we're coming from into Tyler. So he will really be a great asset if we do this. And that's about it. Anybody has any questions? We'll need approval on this to get a contract out if the board decides to, and then we will probably begin to integrate next, late next summer, early fall, this time of the year, to get ready for 2024 tax year.
Yeah, Bill, Bill and Danielle did an excellent job on this. They did some outreach, they networked with other municipalities. I mean, you guys really did a great job in getting the price down so that you could do this in a consortium with other villages. There is not a lot of software out there that does this. There's Govern, which is what most of the larger towns use, town of Southampton, which is, the price point is really astronomical. And then there's Tyler, and then, as Bill pointed out, in other states, there are, is a little bit more selection and variety, but you really need something that's specific to New York State laws. So we could, we could actually include the, you know, as an allocation of capital reserve and appropriation next year, because it is a one-time allocation to purchase the software, and then we just have to take the $10,000 increase in the operating budget every year.
Is this program more efficient than, well, it doesn't matter what we have, it's going to be outdated anyway, but it's, has it improved in efficiency and accuracy? What are the...
We really like our current software. It's pretty simple. The Tyler software and Govern, they're mainly used for towns, so you have a lot of bells and whistles that we don't even need, and we've told them, we've sent them our wish list, and they realize that even if you had a city of Long Beach who has 14,000 properties, we have just under four, that we're getting a better price than them, even though we're in the same group. And they also told us if we could get another village or two, they would give us more of a discount, so we're working on that as well.
Reach out to more people.
Long Beach and Freeport.
I like that, that's good.
But, but Bill, the current system is really going away, so we don't really have a choice.
No, we have to get out, and I don't want to get out. I think there's some villages that are kind of putting their head in the sand, that hope they extend it another year or something, but that's really playing with fire, and we want to really get it now, because it's only 15 months or so, and then that's all they've promised us.
Right, right.
We may be really in trouble, because there's no guarantee that the PAS software will be even able to be migrated into a new software, and that is obviously totally important.
All right, thank you, thank you very much, Bill. You've done a good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
The $17,000 each year, that includes, it's all-inclusive of support, technical and otherwise? Okay.
Yes, that's very important, because we do run into problems, and we have to have somebody in the form of media, so that's, you know, we expect very good support, and we've really asked them about that, and we've asked people that use their software, if that's the case, to get right back here.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill. All right, so if there's no further questions, we'll, we'll keep on moving tonight. The next portion of our meeting is the public hearing portion, so I'll make a motion to open the public hearing regarding local law 15-2022, the proposal to amend the Village Code Section 116-37, A119-2, building permits, certificates of occupancy, fees, and enforcement. So I'll let either Ken or Bill take this one from here.
No, I'll let Ken take this one, but we did leave out another public hearing on the fees for, you know, construction and the ability of the village to collect on the actual construction cost as opposed to just the estimate. So Ken, why don't you take this one, and then I will, I'll do the other one that was noticed for this meeting and then somehow was not put on the agenda.
Well, yeah, well, I mean, I'm looking at the agenda, and it appears that the two village code sections were merged in that public hearing.
Okay, well, that's, that's fine, but the thing is, the verbiage that pertains to the actual cost and the fees associated with that was not in the verbiage in the, in our book here with the hearings, so that's why I had Kathy print out the verbiage that we looked at at the last meeting.
Right, so, so what happened was Jeff Linkoff, who was counsel, you know, who was a land use counsel, he drafted two separate local laws.
Yep.
One of them, and this is the one that's on for today, is that if a property owner has any pending violations, the building department and the various land use boards should not be processing their applications until those violations are corrected.
But we're going to notice that out tonight. That's not a public hearing for tonight.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought. I thought this was done backwards. I mean, that, that one should be noticed for the next meeting as a public hearing, but what we noticed at the previous Board of Trustees meeting was...
With the cost?
Yes.
With the cost.
Yes.
So those, see, what happened, if you look at the agenda...
Yep.
The agenda references both sections.
Right.
So it was a little unclear.
Right.
So, okay, so the public hearing then has to do with when you, especially for commercial property, when you submit your application, the fees are based upon 1.25% of the estimated cost of construction.
Correct.
The proposed changes, oversimplified, is before a CO is issued, after the work is done, they need the owner and/or contractor to certify what the actual costs were, and if it was higher, they have to pay the difference. So for instance, if somebody comes in and files an application that says it's $100,000 worth of work, and they do $5 million worth of work, we need to be able to recoup the difference based upon that misrepresentation.
Correct.
Bill, is that correct?
That's absolutely correct, yes. Yep, and so...
Bill, hold on, if I'm not mistaken, I just want to be, did we, did we open the hearing?
Yep.
Oh, no, we're not...
You didn't vote.
We didn't vote to open it. I'm just trying to explain that there was confusion in what was put on...
Got it, okay, so whenever you're ready, I can make a motion to open...
Sorry, go ahead.
No, brothers, I just want to make sure we're...
Yeah, no, correct, correct.
By the book here. Okay, so I'll make a motion to open the public hearing regarding local law 15-22. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, hearing is open.
Okay, so again, happy...
Let's repeat that then.
Okay.
So, and I think, I think Jeff Linkoff is who crafted the language. I think he's there, and he's waving his hand, so if...
Oh, okay, well, if Jeff wants to come into the meeting, please let him in, yeah, by all means. Sorry about that. I didn't, I didn't know he was here.
I, I asked him to be here like five minutes ago.
Oh, good.
Because of the confusion that he drafted two separate local laws. Jeff, are you there?
I am here, and I didn't hear anything Ken said before, so it's like I was...
Okay.
Jeff, you're even in your office with five minutes' notice. I'm impressed.
It's pretend.
So Jeff, what we said is, you, you were tasked with drafting two separate local laws.
Correct.
One of them being that if there are any pending violations, the building department shouldn't issue any building permits, and the various land use boards should not take any action until those violations are addressed and resolved.
Again, this is, this is, we're noticing this public hearing out later on in our agenda. The public hearing...
I was just catching Jeff up for the conversation, because he only logged on three seconds ago.
Okay.
So, and then the second local law had to do with the issue of the fees people pay, especially to commercial property, pay 1.25% of the estimated construction cost as their fee, and that you had drafted legislation that before a CO is issued, the building contractor or the owner needs to submit a certification as to actual costs that were incurred. And again, to use the extreme example, if they estimated it was going to be $100,000, and it turned out to be $5 million, that before any CO is issued, they need to file a certification and then make up the difference in the fee. Is that correct?
That's correct. The only add I put in is that, the idea is that if there's, it's the general contractor who provides the certification, unless there is no general contractor on the job, then it'd be the owner. When I spoke with the trustee, the sense was that as a general rule, it'll be your contractor on the work, so you'd rather have the contractor provide the certification. So I just added, for the owner, if there is no general contractor, if the owner's doing it by himself.
Bill, is that what the intent was?
That was the intent, although I did meet with the board, the land use board chairs this afternoon, and they suggested that we also add that, again, an affidavit from the general contractor with accompanying documentation as to costs, because most general contractors would have a record of the costs that were expended on a project. So the land...
That's like a good business practice on that mark.
Yeah, the, the, the land use chair, in fact, it was, it was chairman of the ZBA that made that suggestion this afternoon, so I think it would be good to include that with the affidavit from the general contractor, if, again, if everyone agrees. Is there a sense of the board that that makes sense?
Well, you know how I feel, so...
It's up to, it's up to the board what they want to do here, yeah.
And it's not a difficult thing, because every contract has a spreadsheet. They know exactly with all the change orders and everything else that occurs on a job. It's really a simple thing to, to get the bottom line is on any given job.
I mean, I like, I like, I like the increase here, because obviously due to inflation and other factors, it's very easy to come in below estimate. Do we want to be very heavy-handed? I'm in favor of not being heavy-handed, but, but just my...
What does, Jeff, Jeff, you were in the meeting. Do you have any comments?
I was not in the meeting.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I'm, I'm referring to Jeff Broadley, who was there as the chair of the ARB.
All right, I think it was said that it just sounds good business practice. An affidavit is just really worth the paper it's written on, unless you really know the principle behind it, that's one thing. So without supporting documentation or the ability to gain supporting documentation, it's, it's, there's no muscle behind it. And it's not heavy-handed, Mr. Mayor, it's just a matter of sound business practice. Attest to what you, if you attest to it, you should be able to support it. It's that simple.
As with anything, there's opportunity for fraud, but there isn't anything, and I don't think the 1% of over-cost is enough of an incentive to really go crazy in terms of the contractor under, underbilling, pretending to underbill the customer, put it that way. So I think we're in good shape here.
All right, I mean, to me, it's six of one half, does it another?
I think, Mr. Schiefer would like to be recognized.
Because we're, we're...
Mark Schefer, co-chair of the Planning Commission, I think that the affidavit is a very, what's being proposed is a very, very good idea, and I think the affidavit, I think, should suffice. In most jurisdictions, I mean, in any, all of jurisdictions where we work, where I work personally as a professional engineer, always an affidavit is required, but never any backup documents. And one of the reasons is because the ICC, which is the International Code Council, which writes the building codes, the international residential codes, and all the various codes, has a section, special section number 109.2, that addresses how municipalities and our jurisdiction should calculate the cost of the work for the purposes of assessing building department fees. And all of the cost of the work, if somebody's going to put gold faucets, you don't really count this into the cost of the work. It has, there is actually a table that the ICC publishes for the average cost nationally, and then there is regional factors for those costs, and this is what serves as the basis of the actual cost. But if the person chooses extremely expensive carpet, or very special paint, or very special millwork, the millwork, for example, should not be counted as the cost of the work itself. So, you know, I think that there is a process that should, should be viewed by the building department, and I don't think backup, I think an affidavit should suffice, that it meets the certain requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Could make sense to actually speak to Tin about this.
Well, Tin was in the meeting. What did, what did Tin say this afternoon, Jeff Broadley?
My sense of it was that he was in agreement with being able to access supporting document. I think Mark makes a good point as to how, what's defined, what's included in construction, and I don't know if that's part of what's being proposed or not.
Well, I mean, you know, the, the issue is, and Mark is well aware of this, is that the average cost of construction in the village of Southampton is much higher than the average cost of construction even on Long Island, just based on, you know, the cost of doing business here in the village. So, you know, the question is, how is the village able to accurately recoup the... the, the fees that are generated by construction in the village? And so we just want to make sure that we are, we are correctly collecting the fees that are, that are generated here because the estimates that we have received, and this was from, from Tin and some others on the land use boards, seem to be lower than, than what the actual cost would be.
Well, you know, I would invite the board and the can to review the, and get advice from the International Code Council. There are many, many jurisdictions, from Martha's Vineyard to, to, you know, other areas where the cost of constructions is much higher. And what they do, they use a regional factor that's applied to table 109.2 in the International Building Code. And using that factor based on square footage, that's what the construction cost is, how it's calculated for purposes of filing fees and building department fees. Now, there are other jurisdictions that also charge per inspection. In this case, we don't. You know, so there are many, many ways to, to charge fees. But I don't think to disclosure of the actual cost of the work from the general contractor, which would include maybe information that may be private information, I don't think is the intent.
What is the downside of that disclosure?
I mean, yeah.
What's the, what's wrong with that?
That, because will you include furniture? Will you include millwork? Will you include carpeting?
We're not, we're not including the home furnishings, no, Mark. You know what's included in, in normal construction. It's not carpeting or, or furniture.
I think it should be a level field. I think it's the way the ICC has it, International Code Council, where it's on a per-square-foot basis with a multiplier to adjust for each area. I think it's, it's a better way to do it. It's like creates a, you know, a more even field for everybody.
Okay, well, to make this simple and so that we can get this done, why don't we just agree to the affidavit? And that's sufficient. Okay? Are you happy, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay, let's just do that then. Yes, go ahead, Jeff. I mean, otherwise this is going to go on forever, and it's not worth it. I mean, you know.
No, I know, I understand. I, I think Mark brings up a good point, which is something, yes, passed the resolution this evening, so at least we make one step forward. But I think he puts forward a good case is that the issue of subjectivity disappears if you make it objective. And the objective measurement would be something on a square-footage basis. And, you know, that's a study onto itself.
Yeah, the, the issue that we have there, obviously, as you know, Jeff, is there are some people that charge very little per square foot. And if you're doing a house on Meadow Lane with high-end finishes, the cost per square foot is going to be dramatically different. The village wants to accurately collect the fees.
Right.
Based on what is being constructed here in the village of Southampton.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's a tough one. I don't know.
So let's just stick with the, with the, with the resolution as it was written. All we will require is an affidavit from the general contractor. And if it's not the general contractor, it will be the homeowner.
Right.
And call it a day.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. And then if you want to look at stuff later on, that's.
Is there other, okay, so that, that's all I have to add to this public hearing, I guess, at this point.
All right, should make a motion to close?
Sure.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close.
Second.
Okay, are you here second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Bill, and you're up next too, because we have no communications with the board. And we have a.
Thanks for jumping on.
Thank you, Jeff. Good to see you.
Sorry, Mayor, sorry for rushing.
No, it's all good. Thank you, Jeff. All right, so Bill, you're up next. We have noted communication with the board, but we do have one discussion item, which is Village Beach Events Fees, presented by Bill Manger. Bill, I give you a lot of credit. You do enjoy raising the fees for pretty much everything. But we're going to need those fees. These fees next year with the rising health insurance.
What's important to remember, though, that fees are only assessed on those that have an application before the village. If you don't have an application before the village, you don't have to pay additional fees. This is to help offset the taxes that are paid by everybody in the village. In, in regards to these fees, a lot of these have not been looked at in, in several years. And these actually came from the fire marshal, Dean McNamara, upstairs in our building department. And he, he noted that, for example, the fees for tent permits in the village are, are much lower than the town. And we should at least be in line with, with the town, rather than, than, again, not assessing appropriate fees. I will, you know, just point out that, that the fire marshal does have to go out, inspect tents, make sure that they are, they meet fire safety and, and life issues. And so there is, there is work to be done on that. He also told me that, you know, some people put in their application less than two days before they're going to put the tent up. And in that case, we have a late fee of only $50. He said, you know, many times this is on a weekend, he's got to go inspect that tent. He said he thinks at least $100 would be appropriate for a late fee for someone applying for a tent the weekend they're having the party. This seems very reasonable to me. It was brought to my attention again by the, by the fire marshal, who said that our fees are lower than the town's. He also talked about applications for propane gas tanks. Again, that he has to inspect. Right now, we're only charging a $25 late fee. You know, we were suggesting even only go up to $30. So it's an additional $5. It's, this is not, not, we're, the village is not going to get rich doing this. And finally, there were fees for bonfires that have to be issued when someone applies for that. Right now, we are only charging $30. The, the town is charging 75. It doesn't seem to make sense why we would be so much lower than the town when we have a lot of people on weekends in the summer that are applying to have bonfires on the village beaches. So my suggestion actually was to increase the bonfire fee to $50 during the week and $75 on a weekend or holiday, which obviously would be a busier time. But again, it still allows village residents, if they want to have a bonfire during the week, to be able to get it at $50 as opposed to what the town pays charges, which is 75. So anyway, that, those were the, the points I wanted to make. Again, these were brought to me by Dean McNamara, who said we haven't looked at this in a while, and that we are lower than the town, and it seems only reasonable that we should increase the fees on some of these items. And so I can, I'm not sure what is the can, what is the proper process for trying to introduce changes to these fees? I'm not sure if this is all in the code or where this would, would appear. But I'm asking you now, as our attorney, how we would do that.
Well, I, I mean, as I've said before, I generally prefer not to give legal advice to my clients in open sessions.
Okay.
But let me, let me say this. The fees that he charged should be reasonably tied to the expenditure of time and effort by village staff.
Yeah.
To do what they're doing.
Yeah.
So if, if you're, you're telling me that, we'll talk about the bonfire.
Yeah.
I, I don't know what the difference between a bonfire on a Wednesday night is and a, or a Saturday night is. But.
There, there are many more applications that come in for weekend bonfires than come in during the week. So the, the workload is heavier for weekend bonfires. Especially if they, if they have to be, anyway, that, that, you know, I was also trying to give people a break if they wanted to have a bonfire during the week.
Trying to encourage them to have it all on a Wednesday instead of a Saturday.
Yes, because everybody puts in for a Saturday night.
But, but, but for the village staff, the effort expended in processing it is the same whether it's a Wednesday or a Saturday.
So you're saying it should be 75 across the board?
I'm not saying what the number should be, because I don't know what the number should be. We, we should talk to Charlene and Kathy to find out how much time gets expended by village staff in order to process.
Well, I did talk to Kathy about it, and she was in complete agreement with the increases.
And also the fact that especially.
I've done my homework.
Especially if the, the fire marshal has to go down and inspect.
Yes, exactly.
Well, that, that was.
The gas in the vehicle to go down and inspect in the short notice and have to go back again.
If I may finish my thought, that's exactly what you do. So you have to, you have to identify. So I think what you need to do is get a report from either the village clerk, the village administrator, the superintendent of DPW, to say, when somebody files an application for a bonfire, what does the village staff collectively need to do? All the things that I think Charlene just said. Fire marshal has to go down, they have to look at it, the police department has to go down. When there's a bonfire, do we send a police officer there?
Well, they're supposed to go down. Actually, that is correct. We raised that with Lieutenant Hurtow. When bonfires are approved for use on our village beaches, we would like the village police to go down at night and drive on the beach and inspect how the bonfires are being handled. That is an additional cost to the village.
At the end of every week, we send a report of all the beach events for the weekend to the DPW department, the fire, you know, the code enforcement, to DPW, the fire, the police department. And we request that the police patrol to make sure that the debris and everything is actually removed from the beach because there is, you know, a security deposit that's posted. And we have had events this, this summer where caterers came in and left debris and garbage all over the beach. We had to contact the organizer. They contacted the caterer, and they came down and immediately cleaned it. But that's why we have to hold the deposit. And the process is that if there's any issues, DPW was to let us know in the morning when they go down there. And then we contact the event organizer, and we tell them that any costs that the village has incurred are going to be deducted from their deposit.
Right, so it's not unlike the bike race, the bicycle races, or the, the parades or what.
Marathons, yeah.
Marathon. So, yes, you need, you need to get estimates from each of those departments as to what the cost factor is. And you can, and I got to tell you, I mean, just from listening to what Charlene said, sounds like $75 isn't even enough.
Well, we, I mean, again, we, we want to be reasonable. And, you know, I thought it was wise to then also be more in line with the town so that, again, the municipality surrounding the village was not dramatically different.
Which is okay, but if somebody challenges what the fee is, although it would be evidence to say, well, the town charges X, the court's going to say, I don't care what the town charges. Because the town might be paying their fire marshal $200 an hour to go down and check out the site. And if you're only paying your fire marshal $100 an hour, you can't charge the same fee. So it, it needs to be in line with the actual costs that the village incurs in order to issue the permit and oversee it. When I say oversee, like you said, go down, make sure that the embers are put out and whatnot.
Yeah.
So my recommendation is to get a, a letter, a memo, a report from the different departments that interact with respect to the, the bonfire, to find out exactly what the timing. Police department might say, yeah, it takes us an hour. All right, well, let's figure out what the hourly rate is for a police officer to do that. Bill, the, the fire marshal might say, it takes me a half an hour. So let's figure out what his hourly rate is. Village clerk might say, it takes me 45 minutes to process. Let's figure out what that rate is. And then you add it all up, and your fee should be somewhere in that range.
Okay, well, we'll do that. Thank you, Ken. But my next question was, and actually, my original question, Ken, was what do we do to, what do we need to do to change the fees that are charged? Aside from what you just explained, what are the mechanics? Does it have to be in code? Is it just by resolution?
The code actually has, has fees set, but it also says in there that the board can change from time to time by, by resolution. So I think.
All right, so then that, that makes it easier. We don't have to change code. So we, we can do it by resolution. So we'll get all these letters and statements from departments and the fire marshal, and hopefully we can do this before next summer, which is when it will come into play.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Ken.
No problem.
Right, so.
Thank you, Charlene.
Thank you. Yes, Charlene and I can give you legal advice in open session, but that's because we're not attorneys, so it's by resolution. Okay, let's, we'll keep on moving here. Thank you for the presentation. We'll start with the suggested resolutions. I'll turn this over to Charlene.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number one, resolved that the claims for the warrant dated September 20th, 2022, totaling $618,260.05, warrant A14 General Fund, and $5,400 warrant H5 Capital Fund are hereby audited and approved. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Quick, quick discussion. I just want to, just essentially put the board on notice. There, there are some warrants here. I didn't sign off on the purchase orders, but obviously others did. There's just some things that are a bit, a bit high here. Looking at a $6,700 bill from Fluid Imagery. There's going to be some legal fees coming down the pipeline that I'm not comfortable with. We're way too high. We're probably over budget on some of these line items. And, and so I just want to let everyone know that it's time to kind of tighten the belts here and reduce expenditures, especially with what we're going to be forecasting in the near future. Rising health insurance premiums, rising pension contributions, potential raises that we need to, to give out, as well as just general inflation. So we really have to make sure that we're, we're using common sense and being cautious and frugal with, with taxpayer money. So, so I just want everyone to be aware of that. And obviously, it says that we are making a resolution to audit and approve. Auditing, and I'm kind of letting everyone know that, want to, want to rein, rein things in a little bit.
Regarding the Fluid Imagery bill, there were some renewals of subscriptions for some of the software. I did review those. We have Microsoft 365. There was also some police software that had to be renewed. So some of those are pass-throughs, so the Fluid Imagery charges us for support. They also charge us for, example, we have to pay a fee per month to have our email service. We have to have firewalls. We have to have certain types of software that, that they manage for us to protect us against cyber attacks like the county just had. So a lot of the costs, some of the costs included in the Fluid Imagery bill are not just for support. And we are purchasing all of our hardware off of the New York State Dell contract now for government services. So we are getting the preferred pricing on, on all of our software purchases.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. I, I did see the warrants, and there's also a fair share of $100-plus dollar an hour consultations for 15-minute or 30-minute increments. So just, again, my, my point is just to tighten the seatbelts here, so thank you.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Resolution number two, whereas Lake Agawam is an impaired water body that experiences harmful algae blooms, HABs, and is in need of water quality improvements. And whereas the Village of Southampton Board of Trustees has longstanding and keen interest in improving the water quality of Lake Agawam for the benefit and enjoyment of the residents of the Village of Southampton and the region. And whereas the Village, the Village Board of Trustees participated in the preparation of the HAB's Action Plan with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, other agencies and stakeholders. And whereas the HAB's Action Plan was adopted by the New York State DEC in April of 2020 with community and governmental support and a sense of urgency to implement water quality improvements to benefit Lake Agawam. And whereas the HAB's Action Plan adopted in April 2020 recommends utilizing the algae harvester technology for Lake Agawam, contingent on necessary permit applications and approvals. And whereas the Village of South, the Village Board of Trustees seeks to implement the proposed action plan known as the Lake Agawam Algae Harvester for Water Quality Benefit. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees conducted a coordinated review with other SECRa involved agencies, including the Town of Southampton Trustees and, and New York State DEC. And both involved agencies recognized the Village of Southampton Board of Trustees as lead agency for review of the project under SECRa. And whereas a full environmental assessment form, EAF, parts one, two, and three, and a detailed project narrative were prepared by the Village Environmental Consultant Nelson Poporhies in conjunction with AECOM and are included in the SECRa record for review of this project. These environmental documents considered to be the project and the mitigation inherent in project design and found that no significant adverse environmental impacts were identified in connection with the treatment of Lake. were identified in connection with the treatment of Lake Agawam using this technique. And to the contrary, water quality and public health benefits are expected in connection with proposed action. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby assumes lead agency for the review of the proposed action under SECRa. And be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees classifies the projected project as unlisted action and issues a negative declaration pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRa, for proposed action known as Lake Agawam Algae Harvester for water quality improvements, including reason supporting this determination as outlined in the attached negative declaration and supporting documents. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number three, whereas the--
I'm sorry, Charlene?
Yes.
Did we jump up, jump over the number two, the reading of the minutes for public session?
No, that was removed.
I apologize.
Okay. All right, resolution number three, whereas the Village of Southampton has prepared a comprehensive plan and must comply with the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRa, whereas in July 2022, the Village of Southampton Board of Trustees reviewed a full environmental assessment form, part one, and declared themselves lead agency for the purposes of compliance with SECRa. And whereas the Village of Southampton Board of Trustees reviewed a full environmental assessment form, part two, in early, in early August 2022. And whereas the full environmental assessment form, part two, indicated that there were no significant adverse impacts of the plan. And whereas the Village of Southampton Board of Trustees held a public hearing on August 23rd, 2022, no comments were made suggesting any significant adverse impacts of the plan. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Trustees, the Village of Southampton Board of Trustees hereby adopts the full environmental form, part three, which is negative declaration for this plan. This negative declaration means there are no significant adverse impacts of the plan. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number four, whereas the Village of Southampton Board of Trustees formed a steering committee to work on the comprehensive plan with the consultant in 2021. And whereas the steering committee held its own public hearing on the comprehensive plan in spring of 2022. And whereas the steering committee sent a draft of the comprehensive plan to the Board of Trustees. And whereas the Board of Trustees held a public hearing for the comprehensive plan on August 23rd, 2022. And whereas the Board of Trustees adopted a negative declaration for the comprehensive plan in accordance with the State Environmental Quality Review Act on September 20th, 2022. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Village, the Village of Southampton Board of Trustees hereby adopts comprehensive plan update dated September 20th, 2022. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second discussion. I got a call late this afternoon from an attorney representing Southampton Hospital. They had three minor things they wanted revised where they are, they are identified in the plan. I spoke to BFJ, and Ken, I'm glad you're on the line. I was told that, again, if we, we can make these changes and adopt the plan with, with the changes that they requested. They were really clarifications on their name. But I can, I will go through them now if, if that is good with you, Ken, and the rest of the board.
Yeah, there was an issue with their illegal corporate name?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So on page 35, and somebody has to record this because we are going to adopt the plan with these revisions as per legal counsel to Southampton Hospital.
Page 35?
Thirty-five, where it says Stony Brook University. It should read Southampton Hospital Association. Do you see that in the middle of page 35? Any potential zoning change would happen at the request of Southampton Hospital Association or a future property owner at a time when future plans for the site are better understood.
Isn't the Southampton Hospital Association, isn't that a, is that?
They said that's the proper terminology legally that they, they believe should be here.
Isn't that a community group?
No.
Or is that?
Isn't the hospital part of the SUNY system?
It is.
No, well, this is the discussion I had with her today. She said, you cannot say that we are part of SUNY. Now, she was very adamant about that. She said, we, we want to be known as the Southampton Hospital Association.
And who is she? She, I'm sorry.
She's a lawyer from Toomey, Lathan, and Shea. She called, actually, Patrick, do you have the name, her name?
Martha Riker.
Yeah, Martha Riker.
Who is she representing?
The hospital.
The hospital.
But that's, but is that?
No, that's exactly, no, that, she came in before, Jesse. She's been at all the hearings and she represents the hospital. Yeah. But I'm just saying she represents the hospital. And she said that the proper name for them is the Southampton Hospital Association.
You're reading them a different.
That's their legal name. They're not, they're not the Stony Brook University.
So it looks like in the top of the, the same column, it actually has the correct reference there, right?
That's correct, that's correct. They made some corrections, they didn't make them all. And in fact, Sage?
Yes.
I believe we may have Noah Levine in the room if he wants to join and add anything here. I don't know, is he there?
Yep, bringing him in right now.
Okay, thank you. Noah?
That's what it is, by the way. Southampton Hospital Association, separate, not private corporation for independent board of directors.
That's it, that's it.
Right, that's it.
The founder of Southampton Hospital now supports Stony Brook Southampton's hospital mission.
See, you got it, okay. So Noah, do you, do you wanna add anything here? I know that we made some of the corrections that they had sent us a letter on previously, but it looks like not every instance had been corrected, and so--
Yeah, I, you know, I thought I did a review. It's my mistake in asking this change. I guess from this point, I think it's for maybe two reasons. I see there probably will be a change. You know, as long as it's spelled out, then it shouldn't be a problem between the, with--
With those corrections to their name. Yeah. Ken, are you okay with that, then?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Yes, yes.
If that's, you know, the proper entity, of course, we should make the, make those changes.
Right, and so the next instance where it appears is on page 71, under V3, Southampton Hospital. Bottom of the second paragraph, again, left column on page 71. It currently reads, "Any potential zoning changes would happen." It's the same sentence, "At the request of Stony Brook University." They do not want it to say that. They want it to say, "The Southampton Hospital Association at a time when their future plans for the site are better understood." Yeah, I told council they did not have to come tonight because I would, I would give them my word that we would make these changes. So thank you to the board for helping me keep my word that we would make these changes. Finally, on page 98, under the medical office district and hospital HA district, the, they, we got some of the acreage incorrect. So they would like us to strike part of the first sentence here. So it says, "As discussed in chapter five, the Southampton Hospital Association," we got the name correct there, "owns 16.6 acres of land." They want then the next word stricken, "located in the MD and HA districts." They said it should not say, "in the village, 10.7 of which are." It should just read, "owns 16.6 acres of land located in the MD and HA districts." And they said that, again, this is council representing the hospital, that if we make those changes, they are all good with this and we are free to adopt. Is everyone okay with that? I just wanna make sure everyone's okay. Jesse?
We obviously need to make those changes, so it's correct.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so--
If it's accurate, that's great.
No, that's accurate. I mean, we, they, they had sent us a letter, and Noah can attest to this. They had sent a letter probably a month ago raising some of these things. And I think, as Noah said, maybe we caught some of them, but we didn't catch all of them. So this is really catching the three that their council found today were still not updated properly. And so if we make those updates, then they're all good. They said it's really not Stony Brook University that has control over the property. It's really the Southampton Hospital Association.
That's correct.
So, anyway, so if we make those changes, we are good to adopt.
So, Ken, should we rephrase the resolved clause to say, "as amended"?
Correct.
Okay. So to amend the resolution, do we have a motion to amend the resolution?
Motion to amend.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The resolution shall be amended now, therefore, be it resolved that the Southampton, the Village of Southampton Board of Trustees hereby adopts the comprehensive plan update as amended dated September 2022.
Motion.
Second.
All right, quick discussion. Just, just a quick overview here. I think, I think this is a very good comprehensive master plan. I'm happy we have it. It was essentially eighteen months or so worth of work, multiple public hearings, multiple surveys, excellent participation. You know, again, highlights for anyone to read. It's a, it's a good roadmap or blueprint for the village to move forward. Got a lot of good information on census data. Obviously talks about open space, climate action plan, bike lanes, identifying traffic as an issue. There's an enormous amount of very valuable information for residents, and it talks about a lot of key themes, so I'm very happy to have this here. There were some areas that I wish, wish were a little bit more robust, but we can always do further study on those. For example, I think that, I wish, I wish we had further detail on parking. Parking is an extremely important issue right now, so I wish there was a little more on parking. Where I did think the plan fell short was on addressing workforce housing. We did talk about adding some multifamily, and there is some good information about workforce housing. But I think that, you know, there could be a bit more on workforce housing. And I also wanted this to really address further. Again, it touched upon it, but again, it could be for further study subdivisions. And then we were just talking about the hospital. The hospital overview does require further study. And I think the plan should say that. I mean, it's a little light on, on the hospital.
Well, Jesse, just to answer that, until the hospital comes forward with concrete plans, this gives us options and flexibility as to what they might present to the village in the future when they request any, any changes. So I don't think we wanted to hem ourselves in. Again, you know, in talking to the council as well, we wanted to have as much flexibility as possible. And, you know, the, again, in speaking to the hospital and their representatives, they were, they were pleased with this. I think that, you know, we couldn't, we couldn't do more without knowing what concrete plans are proposed for that site. I mean, Noah, do you, you wanna add anything at this point?
No, no, I think you captured it. I think what we, what we achieved in the process was we found a sense for where the community was with regard to the radius, the scale, the types of amenities that they might wanna see at the site, and other types of amenities that the village needs that where the village could potentially trade, you know, some public benefit for maybe something that the Southampton Hospital, you know, redevelopment plan, you know, where they might want. But there's, you know, I definitely felt that mining something stone wasn't prudent at this point, and that could be worked out at a later date when the hospital association came to rezone the property essentially.
I would agree that, in fact, we do need more options. The more options, the better. What I, what I fear, though, is, and what I would prefer not to see, is, you know, adjacent townhomes, three-million-dollar townhomes. I don't think that's what the village is looking for right now, but, but it does kind of recommend those three-million-dollar townhomes in here. So that's just one of my callouts, which is why I do believe it needs from further, further study. It also does talk about some multifamily in here. Multifamily is good, but again, what I wanna avoid is luxury condos. Those are things we do not need in the village. Every single resident will tell you, a hundred percent will say, no more luxury condos. And so I wanna make sure those are things that we avoid here. And I'm not sure that, that this, two pages on the hospital actually captured those demands that the village residents are looking for.
So, but it does, Jesse, have options for age-restricted housing, which was something that people spoke about. It also says that in exchange for the possibility of some denser residential development, the village would get something like a public park that would be beneficial to all residents. So there, there are options here. We wanted to have as many options on the table as possible so that, again, in the future, and it'll probably be a future village board, it's probably a few years away at least, we'll have the, the ability to look back at this and look at the options and figure out at that time what is best for the village and the residents.
That's critical. Obviously, having open space preserved is, is, is very important. I just wanna make sure that this is not a roadmap for more luxury condos or three-million-dollar-attached townhomes.
So one of the options, though, is just single-family houses, Jesse.
Right, but--
Well, you know, one thing to think about is, you know, the ball is really in your court because if they were to come in for the multifamily residential district, they would have to propose a site plan. They would basically have to put the project in front of you to evaluate, and you're under no obligation to accept that zoning designation. So it is kind of a back-and-forth process. And hopefully, through that process, you can work out something that's mutually agreeable. That's, that's the hope, essentially.
This also goes and talks about our 12.5 district. But again, I, my fear, we watched what happened with the village latch. Again, this talks about preserving open space here in exchange for the, you know, some of the multifamily but, or, or townhomes clustered to preserve open space. But I wanna avoid a village latch-type situation here. And I'm not, I'm not sure from the two, the two, the two pages we have that, that we'll be able to avoid that.
Well, we can't avoid it because, because Jesse, this, this board or a future board that sits here gets to decide what the zoning will be at that site. So it's, it's fully in, in the hands of the board to determine what will be the future development of that area. It's, I mean, am I correct, Ken, or Noah?
Which is why I'm, I'm just asking for further, further study here. I do, I do believe it makes sense to, again, when the Southampton Hospital Association is ready, but I just don't wanna, wanna make a future board to make a zoning change in the hospital and use this as their roadmap and say, okay, option two says, I'm sorry, option one says, you know, attached townhomes, and, and then, and then we, we provide that in the site plan review or a zoning change simply because this comprehensive master plan says attached townhomes.
Again, there are other options, though, but anyway. Again, we were trying to give as many options to the village as, as possible. And again, the decision about the zoning there will not be made until the hospital comes in with a plan and the village board that's sitting here at that time wants to make a decision about what will go there. Am I wrong, Ken, or Noah?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Is board comfortable with, with attached townhomes being in the complaint?
If it was for age-restricted housing?
Sure.
I don't think that's a bad idea, Jesse. And we want that option, we want that option. Yes, it does refer to that, Jesse. Noah, am I getting something wrong here? We've worked how many months on this?
Well, I understand that we know that it has been, you know, a topic that we've gone through, you know, a number of times, but, you know, there are a lot of nuances. And, you know, I think the approach that we took was to leave, open the door and indicate what we wanted to see. It's very hard to put something out there, you know, to design a site when we don't really know what the hospital is thinking, what the hospital wants to do. It would almost be irresponsible for us. It's not really, you know, our place to design something, you know, which also could work out the benefit or for, you know, the worst where people could see something and say, oh, I don't want that. It really is, you know, kind of puts the burden on them to propose something. I think we've tried to give them an outline of what we want to see. You may have indicated the desire for attainable housing and, or market-rate housing. We have-- We have indicated that there are locations within the village that might be appropriate for higher ask for portable housing, such as 20% or more. This is one of those locations. But, you know, again, you know, it's something that really wouldn't have to be decided at a later point because they are, it's their property.
I know, I think you state the obvious. It's their property. They have a big say in this. And the mayor and I were at a meeting with the hospital board where they outlined in detail that they felt they needed to not only raise a substantial amount of giving, but that they expect to get $100 million in the development of their property. And while we might want to convert that whole site into workforce housing, they're not going to get $100 million for building workforce housing. So we might want that, but the hospital has got a say in it too. So I think the mayor's objections are admirable, but I don't think they're real. The hospital has a definite say in this, and it's not a done deal that they're moving at all. So it's going to be intense negotiations as we go along, depending on what the hospital proposes. And I think the committee, trustee Manger and VFJ have done a wonderful job. Instead of hemming in the hospital, creating a scenario where they can come up with a creative plan and we're able to approve it, or not us, and the Board of Trustees is able to approve it or not approve it. So I'm in absolute favor with the way the plan is constructed at the present time.
Again, I'm not suggesting that at all. My only objection is the reference to the attached townhomes. But I think the hospital should have maximum flexibility. We want them to get their money, but also at the same time have something that works well for the village. So I'm not actually, I'm not suggesting that. My call out here is the attached townhomes. And again, I just look at that, the village latch every day, and that was a mistake. And not a mistake we run repeat. And I don't want to give even an inch here on that. So that's my statement. But again, excellent, other than that one call out and maybe a little bit more and a few other topics like subdivisions, really, really well done comprehensive master plan. We all worked very hard on this, and so did the steering committee and many of the village residents. So those are my comments for the record.
And thank you, Noah.
Well, thank you all. It was a pleasure working with you and what I think is terrific on the step in establishing the strategic plan for the next ten years. And we really hope it is a document that doesn't sit on the shelf and that becomes very useful for you moving forward. And again, thank you for all of your collaboration, your help. Master Plan Steering Committee was involved intimately throughout the whole process, and that really helped us, you know, make sure that we hit our deliverables and get the plan out.
Thank you, Noah. And thanks to Frank.
So we still need to call a vote on adopting the plan? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number five, whereas the Board of Trustees in 2015 committed to the Town Community Preservation Fund to make park improvements at Moses Lane Park according to a plan prepared by Aureus Design, and the Town of Southampton is now requesting that that commitment be fulfilled. And whereas Aureus Design was contracted by the Board of Trustees to prepare a design plan for Moses Park Improvements, and now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees approves the amended scope of work agreement as directed by the Town of Southampton from Aureus Design at a cost not to exceed the existing contract and current purchase order in the amount of $22,500. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number six, resolve the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton hereby approves local law 15-2022, the proposal to amend the village code section 116-37. Building, do we have, do we need to amend this?
Ken, we need you to help us amend it to what we had the public hearing on tonight as it was.
So the public hearing for tonight was for 119-2.
Yeah.
119?
119-2.
It is 119-2.
So we're going to amend this resolution to read that the resolve, the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton hereby approves local law 15-2022, the proposal to amend village code section 119-2, building permits certificate of occupancies?
Correct.
Correct? So on the amendment, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And on the amended resolution, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number seven, the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village authorizes the village administrator to publish a notice of public hearing to be held on Thursday, October 13th, 2022, at 6:00 PM as a hybrid in-person Zoom meeting regarding local law 14-2022, the proposal to amend village code chapter 107 trees. Are we tabling this or are we amending the legislation prior based on the discussion we had earlier today?
Yeah, we have time to amend before this.
Okay, all right. So this is on noticing the public hearing.
I was going to ask to table. I think there's some changes that we need to do before noticing.
Okay, so then we'll table this and bring it up again.
All right, so they, motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number eight, the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton authorizes the village administrator to publish a notice of public hearing to be held on Thursday, October 13th, at 6:00 PM as a hybrid Zoom in-person meeting regarding local law 16-2022, the proposal to amend village code chapter 110-37, schedule F, stop sign on Powell Avenue. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number nine, resolve the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton authorizes the village administrator to publish the notice of public hearing to be held on Thursday, October 13th, at 6:00 PM as a hybrid in-person Zoom meeting regarding local law 17-2022, the proposal to amend village code chapter section, chapter 110-36, schedule E, U-turns on Hill Street. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 10, resolve the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton authorizes the village administrator to publish a notice of public hearing to be held on Thursday, October 13th, at 6:00 PM as a hybrid in-person Zoom meeting regarding local law 18-2022, the proposal to amend village code chapter 110-15, speed regulations and chapter 110-39, schedule H, speed regulations, section B of chapter 110 of the village code to regulate speed limits. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 11, the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village authorizes the village administrator to publish a notice of public hearing to be held on October 13th, 2022, at 6:00 PM regarding the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 12, resolve that the Board of Trustees directs the finance department to make the following budget modifications. Transfer from budget line A 5112-22, permanent improvement drainage in the amount of $62,742.50. From budget line A 5110.44, highway contractual services in the amount of $9,664.54. To budget line A 5112, permanent improvements paving in the amount of $72,407.40. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 13, resolve the Board of Trustees hereby amends the 2022-2025 capital budget for the Highway Department as follows. Move vaccon truck for $450,000 from the 2022-23 capital budget to the 24-25 capital budget. Move street sweeper for $280,000 from the 24-25 capital budget to the 22-23 capital budget, and adding two beach rakes in the amount of $119,368 to the 2022-23 capital budget to be funded through equipment capital reserve. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 14, the Board of Trustees approves the purchase of FOIL request module software of GovPilot to meet the needs of the village and its FOIL process at an annual cost of $4,000 paid by funds utilized from the village clerk, building department, and Southampton Village Police Department. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 15, resolve the Board of Trustees approves Cory Sweets, acting supervisor for the Highway Department, and Mark Maddox, Central Garage Department, to attend the New York State Highway Public Works Expo on October 19th in Syracuse, New York. Travel days are October 18th and 20th. Registration is free. The cost for the hotel accommodations and travel expenses are estimated not to exceed $900. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 16, the mayor appoints and the village Board of Trustees approves Joseph Ricardi to remain with the village as a seasonal part-time police officer at an hourly rate of $26 per hour limited to 20 hours per week. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 17, the Board of Trustees approves the appointment of Gary Gilleski as water quality projects consultant at an hourly rate of $80 effective September 16th, 2022. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. I would love to have Gary stay on. He's been a great asset to us, especially as water quality projects and also in terms of curb cuts and paving. I was inclined to have a slightly lower hourly rate. So that's just my opinion.
I know he's limited to 19 hours a week. Is that correct?
Yes, and it's for, actually, it's a three-month contract. I circulated it to the board yesterday. It was drafted by Vince Toomey's office. And the board has the option of renewing after December 31st. In addition to that, there needs to be bi-weekly reports, Toomey, and also anything over, outside of the scope or in addition to that, needs to be approved in advance.
And there's also a list of the projects that he's working on.
And there's a list, the addendum to the contract was the projects he was finishing up and working on.
Second, do you need a second?
There was, you already seconded, I think. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
So votes for one. Resolution number 18, whereas the village has previously entered into a license agreement with various establishments, allowing them to utilize municipal space for outdoor dining, and whereas New York State has adopted legislation to allow establishments to continue to utilize such space with consent and agreements with the municipality, subject to the approval of the state liquor authority. Now therefore be it resolved that the village hereby authorizes and approves the extension of said license to December 4th, 2022. This is actually dovetails with the outdoor dining permit. So is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. I just want to, and Ken, you're on the line. I'm just curious if the village needs to have these entities that have liquor licenses, if they need to possess insurance to indemnify the village since this is, you know, conducting business on village property.
Well, that would have been part of the original license agreements that were issued.
Was it? So they all have to have insurance? Is there any special additional insurance they need if they're serving alcohol on village property?
It's included in the license agreements that were issued to them earlier.
So they have, this is my question. Do they have the necessary insurance to indemnify the village for serving alcohol on village property?
Well, I believe the certificate of liability allows them to conduct their business, and if their business, the conducting of their business includes the serving of food and alcohol, it would.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Okay, so we're all satisfied with this then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Also, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 19, the Board of Trustees approves the cancellation of the Board of Trustees' work session scheduled for Tuesday, December 20th, at 6:00 PM. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Discussion. Is there a reason that we'll be canceling this? And should we reschedule? I don't want to lose the opportunity to have another meeting. Doesn't have to be six o'clock.
It's the one that's before Christmas that we've canceled. This will be the third one since I'm trustee. It's customary that there's one. I mean, of course, if we need a special meeting, I don't see why we wouldn't have it, but this will be the third year that it's customary, because it's so close to Christmas, that we cancel that meeting.
And most businesses are open. Village is open. I'm happy to do this earlier. I mean, I'm happy to cancel this, but I want to make sure we have the opportunity, which we could always schedule, have another meeting.
Yeah, of course.
There's a lot to get done. I mean, I like to do work, so. It's up to the board, obviously.
Let's take a vote.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
You don't want to cancel the work session, Jesse?
I'd like to have a work session so we can get some more work done.
Okay, but we can.
We could always reschedule, it's fine. I just want to make my point that I'd like to have two board meetings.
This one's very close to Christmas, and we usually don't have one, that second meeting during that time.
Resolution number 20, resolve the Board of Trustees approves the request from Mark Maddox of Boy Scout Troop 58 Southampton to authorize the scouts to camp in Lake Agwam, I'm sorry, not in Lake Agwam, in Agwam Park. I had too many Lake Agwams on the last resolution. On the night of October 1st during the Southampton Fest, as the scouts will help, they'll be volunteering with the chowder contest and other activities during that weekend event. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 21, the Board of Trustees appoints Emma Edwards to the position of Recording Secretary to the Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, and Board of Architectural and Historic Preservation, and the Planning Commission at a rate of $200 per meeting effective September 12th, 2022. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second? Discussion. Is this the replacement for somebody?
Antoinette.
Antoinette.
This is her daughter.
And this is the daughter?
Yes.
And everybody's happy.
All right, is that rate, the prevailing rate?
That's the prevailing rate.
Okay, okay.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 22, the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton authorizes the village administrator to publish a notice of public hearing to be held on Thursday, October 13th, at 6:00 PM as a hybrid in-person Zoom meeting regarding local law 19-2022, the proposal to amend village code chapter 110-37, schedule F, stop sign at Somerset and McGee Street. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 23, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the pilot program to have no left turns on Lee Avenue and Captain's Neck Lane from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, no right turns on Somerset Avenue during the same period. This pilot program will be in effect until rescinded by the Board of Trustees. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to amend. It should say, starting October 1st. Same thing for resolution 24.
Okay, so on the amended resolution, the resolution's amended to add the language to begin effective October 1st. On the amendment, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, is there an end date on that or just until the board has further action?
How do you think we should structure this? Again, October 1st is Saturday, so it technically won't begin until October 3rd. But the question is, we can rescind it at a board meeting, but is there an easier way to rescind it in case, you know?
It's two separate ways you can do it. You can either say until October 15th, or you can say until further board action. So I just, you know.
Well, we'll have a board meeting on October 13th anyway, so we can resess it, that board meeting.
I mean, yeah, I mean, and the question is, how long do people think, you know, we should do it as a pilot until we decide whether we want to do it permanently or not? I mean, I don't know, that's the question, I mean, right?
Right, well, I think we should discuss it October 13th, but, I mean, maybe two weeks isn't long enough.
No, no, two weeks is definitely not long enough.
You think?
Let's see how it goes on the 13th.
Okay.
My concern is that during the period of low traffic.
Wait, wait, wait.
One second, Ken.
My concern is that during the period of low traffic, that the residents who actually benefit from it during the summer will be irritated by the fact that they have to go, well, I'm Captain's Neck, I now got to go east to go west if I want to go to New York in the afternoon on Wednesday afternoon. So I'm concerned that we won't get a true picture of it in the winter. But I agreed with the comment that the consultant made, of it in the, in the winter. But I agreed with the comment that the consultant made, that it's better to do it in the shoulder period than to all of a sudden start it in the summer when it could cause havoc. So, I think we should let it go and see what happens in a, in a slow period, but we have to be careful that some of the complaints aren't coming from people who are just being inconvenienced when there's really no, it's not solving a problem. Anyway, I'm willing to give it a try.
Okay.
All right. And then the other thing I'll add is, again, Halsey Neck is the natural next step, and we'll see how this goes first. Okay?
Yeah, the only issue with Halsey Neck is that there are a lot of people that use that when they come back from the beach, especially if they're going to the county park at the end, and they've got trailers and things like that, and, and I don't think we want to have them forced onto, you know, First Neck Lane and other streets further, further east.
And also, Bill, all the people who live there would then have to go to First Neck if they wanted to go to New York City.
Right, right.
I mean, that's going to be crazy.
So, so, anyway, that, anyway, that's for a later discussion, yeah.
All right, we're good. So, I'll make the motion to amend, starting October 1st.
Or 3rd, or does it matter?
We'll say October 3rd.
Okay.
October 3rd. Okay, so, is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then on the amended resolution, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution Number 4, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approves a pilot program to prohibit traffic on McGee Street from County Road 39 from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday. This pilot program shall be in place until rescinded by the board. I'm asking for a motion to amend the resolution to include the language, October 3rd.
Quick, can we, but discussion first? I don't know.
I mean, I, I would think it would make sense to say no commercial traffic at that time, but just to say no through traffic, if, if somebody lives in that vicinity and they have to use that street, I don't know what they're supposed to do.
Well, unless the cop pulls you over and you say, "Wait, I live here," then what, I mean, it's just, to me, it's, it's too vague. Bill, I agree. I think it should be commercial traffic.
Couldn't it be commercial traffic?
I thought the discussion originally was commercial traffic. That's when we were talking with Lieutenant.
Jesse, you okay with changing it to commercial?
Commercial, or, or, or open only to Village, to, to neighborhood residents. I mean, yes, that's hard to obviously enforce, but, but they can, they can show, people can show their, but there's not going to be that many, the thing is, there's not going to be that many residents coming back between, I mean, there's other ways to get to those, those addresses if you're, you're, you live in the neighborhood. So, there's going to be some commercial traffic. I can't quantify the exact number, but there's also going to be plenty of regular cars coming, coming and going from, you know, East Hampton and.
So, we're trying to prevent the cars from going from County Road 39 down McGee Street?
Right.
In the afternoon.
They go down McGee, then they go across Somerset to get to Hill Street to.
Right, 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 right.
I'd be more comfortable if it was prohibit commercial traffic. That was.
I would do.
I mean, I.
Yeah, and that was the original discussion we had.
The neighbors did ask for no, no through traffic. That's what they asked for, not, not commercial.
But you're going to have a police state. Do you live here or not? I mean, I drive a pickup truck. I got to, I actually have to go down that road to go home some days, and I don't want to be stopped by a cop and say, "Do you live here or not?" I would resent that highly, so I would not be for this vague language.
I'm trying to deliver just for the residents here.
I am a resident, yes. I am a resident. I don't want it, okay?
I, I think if it was limited to commercial, it would make more sense, Jesse. I just think that's easier to, to patrol. I mean, you can see on the driver's, on the license plate if it's commercial or not. You know, again, like, like Trustee Stevenson said, if he, you know, if he's just trying to drive home and he happens to be on that street, is he not allowed to do that during those hours? I do think that becomes problematic for the police department also to try and enforce that, whereas commercial is very easy to see that designation on the license plate.
Then you have to deal with the local deliveries as well. So, it's the Amazon truck coming to deliver something to somebody's house that lives on that street. It's commercial traffic.
Good point.
Amazon usually delivers early.
I don't know. Ken, do you have any thoughts on this?
I'll, I'll take what I can get. You know, if that's what you're willing to give, then I'll take it.
The answer is yes, I do have thoughts on this, but I don't know if you want to give them, if you want me to give my legal opinion in a public meeting.
Okay, why don't we do?
It's a board resolution, so whatever you guys are willing to give.
Well, is there going to be something that's really earth-shattering or startling that you're going to share with us?
Nothing that has not been included in my previous legal advice to you guys, to, to this board, I should say. Excuse me.
Can you bring it on?
What's that?
Bring it on. Tell us what you're going to tell us.
Okay. It's completely unenforceable. This is a pilot program, and the police aren't able to issue any tickets if somebody makes these right turns or left turns, because according to your Village Code, any changes to the, to the, to, to the traffic regulations needs to be adopted and inserted into your Village Code. By doing it by resolution, you're not doing the local law. It's not enforceable.
Ken, I have to stop you right there, Ken.
Yeah.
We, we know this, okay?
Yes.
This has been communicated, and we've discussed this with Southampton Village Police Department. What we asked you to do was to actually research our code so we can make this part of our local law, and actually do this via resolution in our local law. However, we, we don't have that tonight, and so right now, we're, we're trying the best we can to get this done, and so we've already discussed this with our police department, and they're going to be handing out warning tickets and, and actually changing driver patterns. So, we're relying on you and your team to get the local law done for us, so it's drafted, and then we could have a notice of public hearing, and then adopt it. But for right now, this is the best we can do. So, we're going to try to do the best we can until you can actually deliver the amendment to our code that we discussed. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I, I delivered like five local laws to you in the last week and a half. Are, are you asking me to draft a local law that says?
No, 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 no. No, no, we're, we're good. Ken, sorry.
Let's keep on rolling here.
I think, I think, I think we're good, Ken. I'm sorry. I, I understand your point, and it's well-taken, but let's just then do this as a pilot program, and let's just, Jesse, if you're okay, let's just stick it to commercial traffic.
Commercial traffic.
Okay, so we're going to amend the language to state that it's not through traffic, but commercial traffic.
Yeah.
So, do we have a motion to amend the resolution?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And on the amendment, resolution as amended, do we have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There's mayorial appointment?
Make a motion to appoint the following members to the Epics Board, Susan Steinhardt for a term ending June 30th, 2024, and Victoria Kahn for a term ending June 30th, 2024. Is there, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That concludes the resolutions and appointments.
Thank you. We'll move forward with comments from board members. Trustee Arista.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd first like to thank Ryan from VHB for helping us to address the traffic issues, and I'm very happy that we were able to pass some resolutions tonight that would address, even though they're pilot programs, but it's, it's a start to addressing what is the biggest concern of our residents. And I thank you to Matt Weeks, a great presentation, and very happy about what a successful summer, and I'm hoping to once again be number one, right?
Yes. We shall be.
I think we're on our way to being back to the number one beach in the country. It was a great report from Joseph Gates and from the Cornell Program on the pavement, and I'm very happy that 90, 90% of our roads are in such terrific shape, and I, I can't wait to compare his report with what I have, but just shows us that the DPW has been, been doing a great job with our roads, and he had a lot of great suggestions that we will, of course, take into consideration. And I'd like to also say thank you to Gary. Once again, we had his little farewell send-off the other day, which was very nice, and, and once again, lots of luck and all the best to him and his retirement. And also, Steve Phillips has stepped up. He's the Acting Superintendent, and so far, he's been doing such a great job, and I look forward to doing more good things with him. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Trustee Arista. Trustee Brown.
I'd like to thank everyone that did participate in giving us the information on the various improvements that we're going to have. They were quite informative, and I'd like to say a special thank you, and I'm so proud of Cooper's Beach for the entire team that, not just this year, but last year, you've exceeded the goals, and we thank you so very much. We look forward to working with you on your suggestions. We quite agree with many of them, and getting things in line for you so that you're prepared to be even more successful for the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Brown. Trustee Manger.
Yeah, I would just like to give a shout out to Sage. You got, you got compliments today from the chairman of the planning board. Tony Piazza said he's, he's delighted to work with you now as the videographer for the planning board meetings.
Thank you guys so much.
So, I wanted to make sure we, we let you know that. And also wanted to thank, again, the steering committee, and, but more importantly, members of the public who helped provide input on the comprehensive plan. It took us just a little over a year, I guess, from when, when I started, but again, we had many, many meetings, lots of input, and, and I even appreciated the criticism. It's always good to have, have criticism on different aspects, and I think we were able to address some of the points that were raised by different village residents. So, I, I hope, again, this is a, a good foundation for the village to move forward again for the next 10 years, and look forward to adopting the, the suggestions made in the, in the plan over the next several months, so that, again, we can, we can continue to improve the village for all the residents here. So, with that, thank you very much again.
Thank you, Trustee Manger. Trustee Stevenson.
Thank you, Eric. I would just have to say I was so impressed by the presentations this evening. I really wasn't frankly sure about some of the traffic recommendations, but I thought that the VHB Engineering Report was succinct and to the point, and we do have to do something about the traffic. I thought Trustee Arista's comment that you can't really solve it, you can just make Hill Street so slow that they go back to County Road 39, was very appropriate. Unfortunately, there's no place to put all the cars.
That's right.
And, you know, one of the things we saw in the Treasurer's Report was building fees double what our estimate was. Those people all live in houses, they all drive cars. There's a lot more cars than there used to be, and there's only so many places to put them. So, we're doing our very best to manage the flow, and I do agree that instead of having people turning left and right onto Hill Street all the time and having to merge in or not merge in, and people giving each other, you know, the salute, that limiting that will, hopefully improve the restbound flow of traffic. I hope so. Great job by Matt Weeks. Great job by Bill McCoy and Danielle and the Tax Department putting that study together, the assessment software. Great job by Joseph Gates with the, I couldn't believe he's got every single road. He knows how wide it is and how much asphalt it takes. Incredible job. It's really an honor to be part of the team that is this village. We really, all the folks who work for it do such a great job. The Treasurer's Report was stunning to have earned a $2.5 billion surplus. I, I heard what the mayor had to say. We have to be careful. Inflation is real. Costs are rising, but I, I know from working with the budget last year for this year that we did not make over optimistic revenue estimates. I think in terms of Building Department revenue, we actually kept it flat pretty close. So, we, we really do, as the mayor said, have to keep an eye on it and be ready to adapt and adjust as, as costs increase and situation changes. I think we, an example of that was shown today with the surprise came up with the beach rakes, $119,000, but by shuffling things around, moving something, the vacuum machine to a different year, and shuffling things around, it won't have a negative effect on our, on our capital equipment budget. So, again, we have to be, as the mayor said, ready to, to make the hard choices, to make sure that we keep a lid on costs. But to sum up, I just, it really is a pleasure and an honor to work with this group, all these trustees, the mayor, and, and the crew in the village with the great job everybody's doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Stevenson. I'll, I'll keep this brief and just echo our board's thoughts, and I thank you again to the steering committee for the master plan. Glad we got this adopted, and I think the village is moving in the right direction, whether it's the comprehensive master plan, whether it's the steps that we're taking to address traffic, whether it's the internship program with Cornell University, addressing our streets, to which, you know, we stated that many of them are, you know, really near perfect condition, to the improvements that we're making to the Public Works Department, to the teamwork with our, our Acting Chief of Police, and, and our work with members here in, in Village Hall. You know, I think that, that we're taking good steps, and I think some of the results are, are showing, but there's still plenty more work to be done. So, thank you very much, everyone, tonight for a very good meeting. And with that said, I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel, legal, and contractual matters. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Time is 10:37 PM, Tuesday, September 20th. Would you like to make the motion to return to public session and let the record note that no action was taken in the executive session? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have, we need a motion to add a supplemental agenda with three resolutions for walk-on. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution Number 25, resolve the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village authorize the village administrator to publish a notice of public hearing to be held Thursday, October 13th, at 6:00 PM as a hybrid in-person Zoom meeting regarding local law 20-2022, the proposal to amend Village Code, Chapter 116-37, building permits, certificate of occupancy fees and enforcement. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution Number 26, resolve that the Board of Trustees approves the proposal from BFJ Consultants to prepare a arts and cultural overlay district at a cost up to 15,000 to be paid from trustee's special projects. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution Number 27, resolve that the Board of Trustees accepts the civil service reclassification of Vicki Beers to Principal Office Assistant, a non-union title, at a salary of $74,600, and additional stipend for time and attendance will be discontinued. Is there a motion?
Motion.[1780.18]